The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not so good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octobahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
This brings us to the approval of the official agenda.
Mr. Mayor, forward for your consideration, I would recommend the following items for placement on the consent agenda. Turning to page four. Let's see, and that is Roman numeral nine from page three. C, number one, consent. All five items in D, electric department. All three items in E, fire department. Item F, two and three. The item under police department, G, and then H, all three items under public services. Is anybody that would like to remove any of those items or recommend any of the other items?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move item number six under Roman numeral nine, building, codes and plane department by the consideration requested by Mr. Lee Kosh and Gordon Redbud after the public appearances.
Okay. Is that clear that we, the building department item that we move to the beginning after public appearances?
So Roman numeral nine, A, six is being moved to a position right after public appearances. Is that correct? Yes, one additional item to be added to the agenda, I guess, under board business is appointment of a committee to review the engineering proposals for the bike waves and paths and so forth, and of course, we may want to consider referring that to infrastructure committee. So the engineering proposals are coming in for the bike path, walking tracks, so forth matter, and ultimately, someone will need to review those and make a recommendation to the board. So I would add that item under board business.
Consent agenda, building department item two, the travel request.
One other additional thing for consent that I overlooked, Roman numeral nine, A, building codes department, number two, there is a travel request there. Nine, A, two, to also be moved to consent.
Are there any questions about the changes on the agenda? We have tried to streamline that so that we can move forward quickly. Do we have a motion to approve the official agenda with the changes made, please?
I would move that the agenda as just amended be approved.
Second? We have a motion with a second that the agenda as amended be approved. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We have taken care of the executive assessment personnel. We will now move to comments by the mayor and board of Alderman. A little item that we will start and we will introduce tonight is that we will start introducing some of the new people that be working for the city. Jeff Lyles is our new field and code enforcer. Jeff, there's Jeff back here. He spent several years with the highway patrol and has retired and is taking that particular lesson. LaDaniel Jordan, laborer for the sanitation, are you here, LaDaniel?
No. No, sir, he had a party.
I see, okay. And let's see, I believe that's, did I leave anybody off? I've been barked through. Well, she's not here either in sanitation. Donny Scales, sanitation, see here? But we want to welcome these new people to our city as city employees. At this time, I'd like to recognize the Starville Police Department Officer, Jason King, who has been voted best law enforcing officer by the Starville Daily News poll. Jason, are you here or not?
I'm here, student lawyer.
Oh, okay, well, that's all right. And we would like to also recognize the public service department for a full year without any lost time to accidents effective April 2017. Doug, I hope they're still going on with that, is that right?
Keep it rolling, Doug.
Excellent. Congratulations to that.
Thank you.
We'd like to give our Parks and Rec a congratulations for a very successful soccer tournament that we just had this past weekend in which I believe I was told we had 86 teams from throughout the state to attend. We've got some of the best soccer fields anywhere in this part of the state. I've been told her people, people say that ours are much better than some of the ones that they have found. That brings us to citizens' comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Please, I'd like to say something before you.
Yes, go ahead.
I would just like to do a special thank you to Larry Black and the street department for the work that you've been doing in the Oddfellow Cemetery on Martin Luther King Drive. I just want you to know that it's looking so much better, and I know I'm not the only one that's proud of the way it's looking. I know the city of Starville is proud. So thank you, Larry, and the other workers.
Mr. Mayor, one just brief question. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Mr. Hattaway one brief question. Mr. Hattaway, you and I have had a conversation about the time period that would take for the light to arrive that we approve for the intersection of Watts Street Drive and Hospital Road. Could you share with us that conversation as to how long would take the light getting and why would take that time period, sir?
Yes, sir. I'm really old. The city was nice for the negotiation and the manufacturer's done us to get around six days a week, but there's some issues. I'm just trying to try to dial that together.
And that translates about five months, you were saying?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Hattaway.
Pardon me for not bringing that up, Mr. Hattaway.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, yes, sir.
Okay, we're now opening up a segment of the meeting tonight for public comment. It will be limited to three minutes, and we now, this is your opportunity to say something about the city, for the city, opposed to the city, or whatever. And if you will state, state what ward you live in and what your name is.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. My name is Alvin Turner Ward, seventh. The citizens have two concerns. Read in Sunday's paper, they have a plan and it involves Jefferson Street, Lafayette Street, Martin Luther King Drive, and we just want to get an understanding of what all that mean for the building to get. The through street that runs from Wood Street to 12, it's getting very dangerous now, and they passed up some of the pothole, but then when it get hot, two or three times through with the drug car, either a high-speed patrol car is gonna knock it out and make it dangerous for anyone.
Mr. Turner, anyone else at this time would like to take their three minutes?
I'm gonna watch the clock this afternoon, everyone. I'm Robert Tean, I'm from Roland Hills subdivision, and I have called and complained about this ditch in between my home and where I live at 94 LaFlore. I have left messages here several different times, and no one has done anything about it, and that's been over five to six years ago. They have sent the gentleman out there to look at this, and they have checked it out, but I've not gotten any results from that so far. All the covenants out there, they need raising up, they need to clean it out, they have not been cleaned out, period. The roads out there are bumpy, they haven't fixed up the pavement or anything out there, and I would appreciate it if I would get some results, because I've been waiting patiently, and whenever it rains, my yard floods, and the side of the street I'm sitting on is the south side of the street, and everything from the north and the west come down and sits in my yard with all the debris. And all that would have to be done to repair that is put a little pavement in there and run all the way down to the large covenant for the water would just leave out.
Presently, we, each Alderman has approximately $200,000 to spend in their particular area, and I believe that's, is that your ward, Mr. Perkins?
Mr. Mayor, what I would like to see happen, Ms. Brule, would you talk with him sometime before he leaves and just sense the proper staff out there and give the mayor and I a report back on that, please?
Yes, sir, we will. We've done that, and we will do your report.
Thank you.
Well, I'd certainly thank all of you for that.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Dot Livingston. I was raised in Starville and married my high school sweetheart and moved away for another year for career pursuits. In 2003, we retired and returned to Starville, and we resided at 239 Kreitz Street. And we are located across the street from Little Hearts Daycare Center owned by Ramona Pollard, and which is on the agenda tonight. I have the understanding that she desires to expand the daycare center, and I feel that this board of Alderman, the mayor, and the city of Starville need to be aware of the happenings on Kreitz Street. The happenings there are creating a very awkward and dangerous traffic situation for our neighborhood. I have done some research on this daycare situation, and I understand that the Rosen, Cranzen, Jacksons were the previous two owners of 238 Kreitz. They were the owner and residents of the home and had daycares in their home. The existing daycare center that is there now was grandfathered into a daycare situation because of the previous daycare owners, but a home daycare situation where the people residing in the home and what we have today are two entirely different things. For your information, yesterday, I decided to do some observation and surveillance to give you some numbers. On Monday, between the hours of eight, 7:00 a.m. and 8:30, I observed 30 automobiles delivering five workers and 35 children to 238 Kreitz. In the afternoon, from 3:00 p.m. to 5:45 p.m., school bus number 20 delivered seven children for after-school care. After this time, between 3:00 and 5:45, 40 cars picked up 43 children, and then eight staff cars departed from 238 Kreitz. Then today, the first three cars arrived at 6:42 a.m. They waited until 6:45 to disperse their children until the first staff person arrived. From 6:42 until 8:16, 32 cars drove through the drive at the daycare center. They delivered 31 children and five staff. On Monday and Tuesday, three of the staff cars are parked on the side of Kreitz Street. I personally observed the street cleaners, two of them, one each day, having to come away from the curb and go around these cars, which creates a very hazardous situation on Kreitz as far as traffic. At certain times of the day, the street is completely blocked because of the pickup and the coming and going of these cars. On numerous occasions, the cars from the daycare have used my drive as a turn-through despite the efforts of Ramona Pollard to stop it. I bring these personal observances to you for your information. My personal belief is that an arten-zoned housing area should not have a commercial business, and that Kreitz Street does not need an expansion to the daycare problem. If Ms. Pollard wants to expand her business, she should be looking for available space in a commercially zoned area to do so. My husband and I encourage you to decline the request for expansion of this daycare center. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Amy Schmidt. I live at 110 Apache Drive and had some comments I wanted to share on the Redbud subdivision.
You've got 10 minutes, it's gonna be on the agenda already.
Sure. Basically, I wanted to, you know, I realize there's no legal basis for our objection to the traffic being routed down Apache Drive as the plan is, and I realize, you know, we're not objecting to the subdivision being constructed at all. You know, that's these individuals livelihood is constructing and selling houses, and I respect that. My husband and I bought our house on Apache Drive less than a month ago. We have a small son, and what appealed to us was that we lived on a dead-end street with very little traffic. The kids could play in the street and feel safe about that. So from my perspective, the concern is with 80-plus division or houses going up, you know, that's a huge increase in the traffic coming down that street, and I don't think it's, I don't think it's wrong of us to request that they route that traffic a different direction. It'll be more costly to them to route it to the north or to the west, but, you know, these rural or streets in our subdivision, I don't believe were designed to carry traffic from that large of a development down our street. And, you know, I'm appealing to you on the basis of preserving quality of life for the residents on that street by making, you know, maintaining it as a safe street for our children to play on, keeping the noise level at what it currently is with very little traffic and, you know, cars not revving their engines down the street and loud music playing. And I think we all believe that with the price range of the houses being proposed, that we could certainly be in the market to have a lot of students living in that area. So my appeal to you is simply that we maintain the quality of life that the residents, you know, purchased their property on that street for and by routing that traffic a different direction as opposed to going through our quiet subdivision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments pertaining to the present discussion? We'd like for them to be held because we have a whole ten-minute segment that will be devoted to this discussion. Any other issues from citizens in the community? If not, we'll move on to our first public appearance. Ms. Ramona Pollard requesting the expansion of a non-conforming use in an R2 zone of a childcare center located at 238 Kreitz Street.
Hi, I'm Ramona Pollard, and I am in Little Hearts. First of all, I would like to say that I am very understanding of the concerns. Of course, Ms. Joyce Jackson did own the daycare prior to myself, and I did actually purchase it from her, and she was already grandfathered in when I bought it. You know, I would like to add that Ms. Jackson was keeping 40 children there when I bought it in two rooms of that home. She did also live in that house, and she was keeping 40 children in that home with one other caregiver. I am licensed for 45, and I do have eight employees, and, you know, I'm very proud of the way that that center has grown, not in as far as amount of children, but the quality of care that we give, because childcare is the hardest business anyone will ever be involved in. I've been in it for 10 years, and, like I said, it's been a, it's been a real struggle. It's been a, it can be a very rewarding business because, you know, you get to be involved in these children's lives and, you know, and these are our children. These are our children of Starville that we do need to take care of, and the thing is, there are so many, we have several child caregivers in this city that are operating with no license from the state, no privileged license from the city. They're totally illegal, as we found out several months ago, there was one that came up, but that's just one of many. And here, you know, I'm trying to run a legitimate, legal business to do what I think is in the best interest of these children, including my own. My own goes there, and my own does ride the bus there in the afternoon. I'm not trying to do an expansion. I am not, you know, trying to do any kind of extension to the building. I just want to simply put up two walls and enclose my carport, because yes, I do keep after-school children. They're in there, and they're much louder and much more routier than the smaller ones, and the only thing that I would like to do is enclose that carport, just put up two walls so I can move those after-school children out there. I'm already keeping these children. It will not increase traffic flow or parking or any of those issues that are brought up. And like I said, and I understand those, but we're actually, I mean, I am a school, I'm a preschool, just like, you know, you know, Sudeth is right around the corner, they're in a residential area, yes. Traffic, first thing in the morning, because everybody is rushing, which is not as bad in the morning because parents are late and they all straggle in, and this one comes in at this time and that one at the other, but in the afternoons, of course, we close at 5:30, and the parents are rushing in there the last 30 minutes to pick up their child. And yes, you know, it's, the traffic is whizzing through there, but that is with any kind of school childcare giver, that really has no bearing on the actual business. And like I said, I feel like that I am in total legal compliance with the ordinance. Can I give each of you a compliment?
Thank you.
And like I said, I'm not trying to do an expansion to the building. It states, of course, in B, it defines extension. You know, I'm not going outside of the perimeter of the building, I'm not doing any kind of extension, you know, addition as far as pouring any concrete, doing any roof line. The only thing I'm actually trying to do is an alteration to the existing building, which I think would fall into the 50% rule. You know, we're talking about a $5,000, you know, improvement here. And like I said, you know, I'm not doing this for myself. You know, I'm already keeping these children. You know, I'm just trying to provide better quality care, to give them a place of their own. I'm not gonna hire any extra staff, I already have those in place, but they just need a place where if they want to get loud, if they want to play music in the afternoons after school, I just would like to have a place for them. And like I said, I'm all about the quality of care, and that's the thing that I have, you know, strived the most with for the last 10 years, and it's, you know, I've done a lot of improvements compared to, I believe, that the care that the children were getting before I actually bought the daycare. And like I said, you know, I apologize to the neighbors, I do. You know, I have thought about it, and that's, you know, I would not like anybody, you know, anyone turning around or using my drive as a drive-through. I will do, I promise, do everything I can do to help that situation. I'll even, you know, right now, and, you know, and I've thought a lot about it, and the shutters on the front of the house, they're painted red, green, yellow, I mean, it looks like a children's place. You know, I'll go back and paint the shutters black or whatever it would be if it would be more accommodating for them. I'm not trying to step on anybody's toes over there. You know, I will do what I need to do, but, you know, I feel like I'm in compliance. You know, that was a big expense when we bought that daycare. I mean, it was, it was a big expense for us. And like I said, I, and I'll just be honest with you, I struggled with it for a long time before we bought it. Went over there several times, and every time I walked in there, I left crying, because those kids were just piled on top of each other with two caregivers, and I left there crying every time. And I believe in my heart that those children are so much better off. And honestly, I've thought about selling it several times when I get so just stressed and at my wits end with it. But every time I get close, I, because I just, I know that I can, I do a good job there, and I do offer good quality care and try my very best, and it's not easy, it's hard to find good help, you know, dealing with parents and just problems, but like I said, I'm not asking to do an expansion. I'm not asking, you know, to add 20 children or whatever, I'm just simply asking for a better place for them, and I will do anything I can do as far as the neighbors to, you know, help solve their problem or, you know, I, I've just, I guess I just, in my heart, it's like, I mean, I just truly hate that, children are such an inconvenience, and that's really, really how I look at it. But, you know, our children are not an inconvenience. We all have to do things sometimes and adjust our schedules and our lifestyle, you know, for our children, and I just ask you to consider it and look at your own ordinance and just see what you can do.
Ms. Pollard, I think, certainly want you to understand that the initial response you received from the building department was not a reflection of how you operate your business or who you are. But there is a reason why we don't allow commercial businesses in our residential neighborhoods, and I think it probably best to have Ben Griffith come up and tell us a little bit about why it's in the building department's opinion that this would be an expansion of a non-conforming use, and I think sometimes when we hear that word "expansion," you're thinking it's not, you're not changing, you're not making the building bigger, although you are certainly increasing the space within that building. But if Ben's available, he may be able to shed some of that light in why that I don't believe the city's gonna be able to allow this exception. Ben?
As might the city attorney in reaction with this matter.
Mayor and Board, Ms. Pollard?
Y'all want to have a seat, or do you prefer to stand?
I'll stand.
It's pretty, it's pretty, the way the code reads as far as regarding a non-conforming use, an expansion of a non-conforming use is not allowed. The use in this case is a daycare center that's in an existing neighborhood, in existing structure. The state dictates the number of children that are allowed. I believe Ms. Pollard said 45. 45 is the number that are allowed, and that's what the state allows her to keep. What she's, what she's doing is not expanding the business, or the, excuse me, she's not expanding the number of children, what she's doing is enlarging the structure that it's being, that the children are being kept. kept in. So it's an increase in square footage. And she's correcting and closing a carport. She's not changing the roof line. She's not adding concrete. She's not doing that. But she is increasing the square footage, which does in turn increase the habitable space, which in turn increases the ability to have an increase in a nonconforming use. So it's not like if she adds the square footage, she's going to be able to keep 10 extra children. It's not based on that. She's already, if I understand right through what the state says, she's maxed out as far as the number of children. I think the guidelines change about every two years, I understand, and the one that she's under is allowing 45 children. And if that goes without, I think it's a year that it's not used, then it would go away and it'd have to come under the current codes. So in her case, it's not the business, but it's the building that's being expanded and the potential is there.
And just to confirm, this is an R2 zone?
It's R2 zone.
Residential zoning and through, because this family home daycare center was in existence prior to the city having zoning, it allowed this special exception. But would, is this business itself allowed in an R2 zone if we were talking about a new business?
The only, the only business, the only childcare business that's allowed in an R2 zone is family home care, which family home care is defined as the resident or obviously the person who owns the house and resides there. And they can keep five children and that includes their own children. The other two classifications of less than 12 and more than 12 are not, let me back up. The family home care is allowed as a special use exception, which means it would go to the planning and zoning board and it would come before this board for approval. The other two classifications of childcare that we have in our land development code are group A and B, which is less than 12 and more than 12. And there are prohibited uses in that zoning district, which is why this is an existing nonconforming use. And the code is pretty specific about allowing, about not allowing an increase or an expansion of a nonconforming use.
This was being used as a child center prior to zoning adoptions by the city, I believe.
That's my understanding. The records don't go back that far to show that. The state only shows what the current owner has. I haven't been able to find anything else, so I'm just going by what I have available and going by what our land development code says, sir.
And do all of them have questions they'd like to ask this time?
Let's make sure what we're talking about here. Ben, you're saying that an enclosing of a carport is an expansion?
It's an expansion because it's an increase in square footage of a structure that's there.
But how does, how does the code exactly read? Does it say specifically increase in square footage?
It does not.
It does not?
It does not.
Okay. So technically, one could say that there is space there, say children could do something in the carport as it presently exists?
Yes, sir, they could. But it's, it's an open carport.
But it's still space that is there?
Yes, sir.
Under which roof, something could be, some activity could be done or something. So I'm trying to get, and Rodney, of course, I'm ultimately coming to you, does this really mean expansion? You know, it does not say square footage addition. It says extension or expansion. And so I'm getting at, how do we really interpret that?
Well, the land development code doesn't address it, but the building code addresses it as far as an expansion of habitable space of the structure, whether it's residents or business.
You're talking about the currently adopted?
Yes, sir.
The International Building Code, 2003?
Yes, sir.
You know, again, we're into all sorts of semantics and definitions here. The space is there. Yes, it's not heated and cooled space. Does making it heated and cooled space constitute an expansion or does it not? Ms. Favor, any thoughts on that?
Alderman, I have to defer to what Ben is telling me. He's telling us that the International Building Code, which we adopt, the city adopted, says that what Ms. Pollard has asked you to approve constitutes an enlargement or an extension as is prohibited by our ordinances. Now, whether or not she's using it, and it's clear that she's not trying to increase the number of people and she's not trying to increase the traffic, which is the concern expressed by Ms. Livingston, but unfortunately, our ordinance doesn't address that. It doesn't address that. And so if we have to go by the plain meaning of what the building code says, then what the city planner is saying is that this definition in our ordinance, what she's contemplating, is, makes the definition of International Building Code of enlargement or extension of existing nonconforming use. So based on what he's telling me, and I haven't reviewed International Building Code, I have to agree with him on what he's saying as far as that goes.
And you're saying upon review, you may not have the same opinion?
Well, I don't know. I'm just telling you, I didn't review International Building Code.
Well, if that's what this is hanging on, it looks like this ought to be reviewed, does it not?
Well, that's what Mr. Griffith, what Ben's saying is that basically pursuant to the definition there's in Building Code that this would contemplate, this would make the definition of an enlargement or an expansion.
Right, of habitable, habitable space.
Right, I'm not arguing that it does or does not. I'm trying to be sure about what we're talking about here.
Well, I personally, if you're asking my opinion, I would personally like to sit down with Mr. Griffith and look at exactly what he's talking about as far as the International Building Code. But if what he's saying is true, then we're going to be back in the same thing that I'm saying right now.
And being just an observation in the memo that you sent out about this, the things that are addressed on the ordinance, there is not one mention of the Building Code.
Yes, sir.
And that puzzled me.
Because it's not, because of the use of the structure.
I understand, but not one mention of the Building Code is having any effect on this at all. You talk only about ordinance and you talk about...
Could I just say one thing and I don't want to interrupt you, but he made a good point. I am a nonconforming.
We understand that.
And that's what I'm addressing as far as the city ordinance or is nonconforming. And I don't believe that I fall in under the expansion according to the city ordinance on nonconforming structures.
It looks like now I'm getting ready to argue the other way and I'm not arguing either way here. I just want to be sure we've got our law and definitions down correct. You know, yes, you are a nonconforming use, but if you are expanding and so forth, it doesn't matter if you're nonconforming or not, but in this case you are, so that regulates what you can and cannot do.
Okay.
So can we get the two of you to say, review this International Building Code?
Are you certain enough tonight to express an opinion?
I'm basing it on what Mr. Griffith says that the code says. And if it says what he says, which I have no reason to dispute him, he knows the code by far, we're going, I'm going to agree with him again. So basically, I'm, I'll be glad to do whatever the board's pleasure is, but if that's what it says, I'm going to agree with it.
You comfortable, Mr. Griffith?
I mean, there's different ways you can expand it. You could expand it by increasing, you know, the number of children. That's one way to expand it, which the state's, the state's already allowed 45 children and I believe that's the maximum. I don't think that'll go up. If anything, they go down over time because of square footage requirements, et cetera. And I'm sure Ms. Pollard is very critical of that. The other types of expansion are enlargement of the building or enlargement of square footage and you can look at that in different ways. And I look at any kind of the way the ordinance is reading as far as expansion of any nonconformities is any type of expansion. So even though she's not going to, the expansion's not going to allow her to keep any more children, it's an enlargement of the structure that's being used in a nonconforming manner.
But, I mean, we have to look, one of the things that you have to look at is not what her particular purpose is.
Yes, sir.
You have to apply this, you know, uniformly across the city. So you can't just say, okay, well, she's not really increasing the number of cars, she's not increasing the number of kids, but we have to uniformly apply this across the city. We can't look at the purpose for what she's doing it for, number one. And number two?
I understand that.
Is there any precedent that you were able to come across as far as the way that this particular definition as far as enlargement has been used in any similar type situation that you might be able to share with the board?
Not for a daycare center, not the way...
What about any commercial business?
Well, any kind of, you know, if you, if you increase the intensity of a use, which in this case would be the number of children.
Are we not talking about number of children? We're talking about enclosing a carport, so let's not talk about number of children.
But I'm just saying that any different, any expansion. So one would be the intensity of use, which in this case would be an increase in the number of children they're allowed. Another way of extending the use would be, again, to add on to the building, add on to the structure, go into the backyard, side yard, what have you. However you calculate that, you may, if it's under roof, it's not increasing the building's footprint, but it's, again, it goes back to it's increasing the square footage.
Which you said under the definition of the IBC, that falls under the definition of enlargement or expansion, correct?
Right, because it requires a building permit and you're increasing the habitable space of the structure. I don't know what exactly it is right now, but in a carport, I think it's a double carport. Just for general purposes, it's 400 square feet. So that will be adding 400, approximately 400 square feet, which is an increase in the size of the existing structure. Not the footprint size, but the square footage or the habitable space size.
Are you aware of, I guess, let me ask the question a different way then. Are you aware of any precedent right now where, forget about the purpose of what they're doing, forget about that. A nonconforming use has been enlarged in the same or similar type situation with, not specifically a carport. It could be a building. It could be enclosing a garage that was being used as a garage to park maintenance vehicles or some type. Is there anything, any type of precedent along those lines that you might be able to share with the board to see how we have uniformly applied this particular, how you succeed?
I can't think of one.
To a nonconforming use.
I can't think of one that's occurred here, I can't think of one that's occurred since I've been here that I'm aware of. The only exception that the code allows for an expansion of a nonconformity is if it's a matter of public health or safety or things of that manner. And I would interpret that as, say, a building doesn't have adequate restrooms and that building is allowed to do an expansion to add restroom facilities because of public health and sanitation reasons. So there are some exceptions. It's not, you know, there are some exceptions and they're only for those cases. Those are the only ones that are allowed.
And again, the thing I'm simply trying to get at, we're talking about all sorts of peripheral things. Here simply is the proper definition of the term. Does the enclosing of a carport that is used in the facility presently constitute legally under our ordinances, and we've said no, but we've said but with the building code, it does constitute an expansion or enlargement? And I think we need to be very, very careful here.
Of the structure?
Of the structure.
And I would say yes, because the square footage of the structure's going to change. When the state comes to do their annual inspection, they're going to look at the square footage that's allowed because they're going to look at the number of square feet per child. So they're going to...
See, again, we're getting into children and square feet per child and all this type of stuff. I'm talking about, does that constitute an enlargement of the structure? You talk about side yard additions and backyard additions. It's not that. It's enclosing a carport, I want to make sure.
Yes, sir. It'll increase, it'll enlarge the square footage of the habitable space of the structure. The building footprint, the footprint of the building and the roof line will not change. The square footage will. And it will be an increase.
Certainly heard enough from, from all the different parties and, you know, I appreciate the thought processes that have gone into this, but at the end of the day, it's a nonconforming use in a residential neighborhood and I don't think, whether we call it expansion or any other word, that that's what we need to be doing in a residential neighborhood. And I'd move that we deny the request to expand this facility at 238 Crichton Street.
Motion, and second to deny this request. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. You want to make another comment?
Yes, I do.
You've been talking all night.
I'm going to vote to deny this thing solely on the basis of the city planner and city attorney's interpretation of that. Hope we will not find that those interpretations are different.
We will now vote. Any more comments? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Okay. Let me get the motion passes.
I only have one other comment that I would like to make, okay? And probably will not be well watched. And Mr. Cox has one on Green Street. In fact, a building permit was just issued to a nonconforming, unlicensed daycare on Green Street. She's keeping about 15 children in her home. And I just feel as though if I'm going to be forced, which here's the book of rules and regulations from the state that I have to follow. And I think that everyone in this city should be asked to follow the same rules and regulations. I have to have a privilege permit, privilege license from the city. And there's several in this city that everybody just turns their head and looks the other way. And I, like I said, I'm trying to run a legitimate childcare business and we will address those issues.
The city, I think, would certainly like to, if you have knowledge of uses that or not.
Right, we have a new code enforcer that I pointed out tonight. Tough-looking guy.
And, you know, and I'm not one to, and I don't want to do those things because, like I said, childcare is the hardest business that you'll ever be in and we need good childcare centers in this town.
Thank you. Our next presentation is by Indian Hills Homeowners Association Concerned with the Red Bud Springs Residential Development Project.
Good evening. I'm Mark Goodman, 208 Hawassee. I want to thank y'all for giving us a stoplight, which is perhaps going to help set up a solution to this problem. What we'd like to do, Mr. Carson, at last Tuesday's planning and zoning meeting, discuss creating houses that would be three to four bedroom homes, 1,400 square feet and be in a market value of $200,000. And he's got photographs up here. And I think the neighborhood, you've been polling the neighbors for the last five days and most of them seem pretty happy with those numbers. And so what we would like to see is those numbers incorporated into the covenant. They have a draft up online. It doesn't discuss any of these specifics. And so if they would put that language into the covenant, not necessarily my language, but the language into the covenant, I think we could go a long way towards solving this problem. Now, I also know that he wants to have some flexibility in how these houses are built and for that purpose, he's created an architect, an architecture committee. And what we would recommend is that three members from Indian Ridge be allowed to be voted onto that committee for some period of time. And then essentially then, Indian Ridge people could work with the subdivision people in maintaining the standards of that subdivision. If this becomes superfluous after a couple of years, then essentially Indian Ridge can vote to give up its three seats and let them get on with their business. And so we think these are two very good compromises and they're based upon the words spoken at the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so we don't think we're asking them to do anything except stand by their own language. And if we reached some kind of settlement on that, then the only issue remaining is the issue of the entrances and exits. And so I've put together some photographs of this area so you can get a look at what streets we're talking about. And they're in order from the corner of Cherokee and Hawassee back into the subdivision.
Does Mr. Carson have a copy of this?
Uh, no.
That would be nice if you'd get him just a copy of that.
And of course, this is sort of the main sticking point here. And I don't think, having talked to the city planner, that you guys have any authority to tell them that they have to provide a new exit. What we would like you to do is ask them to take a look. You know, that at the meeting, they talked about coming north out of here and either up through Habitat Space or there's some duplexes for sale up there. And if I, I hope I'm quoting him right, he said he did not like the idea of mixing rentals with homeowners. Well, Rolling Hills has been doing that mix for a long period of time. Well, Rolling Hills has been doing that mix for a long period of time. Indian Ridge has been doing that mix for a long period of time. And as far as I know, we have no contamination. So I'm not exactly sure what the point is. Now, I do know that if you were going to bring new buyers in through Cheyenne or through Cherokee, that's going to look a lot better than up here. And maybe that's the issue, is they want the aesthetics to go their direction in terms of selling homes. But as these sho, as these photographs show, the problem is, is you've got to come through that intersection to get in and out of the subdivision, which means that the exits are going to go like this, they're going to go like this, and then exit onto a Hiwasi. They have no direct access to a Hiwasi street, only on the Cheyenne, only on the Cherokee. And so they have discussed how nice these places are going to be, people are going to be sitting on their porches, they're going to be walking up and down on the sidewalks, it's going to be a quiet, peaceful place. But the only way they can achieve that is by stepping on their neighbors who live on Cherokee and Apache. Now, you, again, you may not have the authority to require a change. And I know we've talked to them to our blue in the face, but I would hope that some of you would at least tonight, after the meeting, phone call this week, say, "Look, take a look at this. Don't you think you could do something here?" We're talking about a project that's going to raise 15 to 16 million dollars. They have a lot of extras in here already, waterfalls, keeping the sidewalks, a park, a walking trail, one more lot, it's not going to bank or break this project. And so, you know, maybe, we can't get through, but maybe if some of you just said to them, you know, it'd be in the best interest of the community and these neighborhoods, if you went north, maybe they'd listen to you? And I think that's a reasonable thing for us to ask, the hope that you would do, is just talk to them on a one-to-one basis and say, "Why can't you do this?" We've got several other people that'd like to come forward now. Karen?
Two little comments that I would like to make is, I would encourage you to drive through this subdivision, it's a beautiful subdivision, and it really could be enhanced with this new subdivision if the housing were comparable. That's all we're asking. Because if you're going to put something that's not comparable, it's going to reduce the value of the homes that exist there. My second main concern is one way in, one way out. And even though it isn't my concern directly, I am a citizen of this community, I love Starkville, I want to see people here safe. How is it going to be safe when there's a fire station on Garrid that's going to have to go down Hiwasi, through Cherokee, up through the subdivision to try to get to a home? It would seem to make more sense if there was a way off of Garrid, that fire truck can come right down Garrid, right into that subdivision for the safety of those homeowners. So that is my main concern. I'm not happy about additional traffic, but when I bought my house, I knew it was a possibility. I knew that street could go through. But I am very concerned about one way in and one way out.
Lynn, could you?
Sure. Thanks. I live on the, the corner of Apache and what I've learned is now Cheyenne with, with the Harrises. Sonny Breland pointed out that when the Apache subdivision was made, okay, stubs were required, I mean, out of the subdivision, so many feet from a cul-de-sac. Okay? And yet, the proposed subdivision has no stubs out to the north or to the west. That seems in variance with, with what at least was in the past. The other thing is, is at the top, I mean, at the top of Apache, I mean, we're talking about, I mean, this is a small subdivision and we're, we're talking about a 500% increase in traffic at the top of Apache. Okay? 300%, okay, at the end, phase one and phase two, onto Cherokee, which is one block long, okay? It joins Hiwasi with a three-way stop and I anticipate in the morning when I go to work, that traffic will be backed up that entire block. I mean, so, I mean, it's, it really will change the entire feeling of the neighborhood. A lot of the things, I mean, that make Apache nice, I mean, are amenities that Mr. Carson is selling for Redbud Springs. I mean, people walk, I mean, it's, lots of people come from the Wellness Center and they walk down through Apache. It's a nice area, children ride their bikes, these are features that Mr. Carson is, is promoting for his, his new subdivision. Okay? But they're going to come at the expense of what exists now in Apache. And I would like to see that addressed. Okay? I, I would like to see some other way in and out of that place.
Thank you. Cody, you want to come up? Arun, why don't you come on up too? Do you mind if we put another chair?
I'm Cody Coyne, I live at the end of Apache at 211. And for about six years, I was the only home down at the end of that. And I, I would like to reiterate one of the earlier comments, it would, for some of these complaints, I think you can better appreciate where we're coming from if you drive those streets and look at the way they're laid out and the geography, meaning the hills and the elevations and where the low spots and where the high spots. It's not just the length of the streets like on Cherokee, which is very short, but it's also the elevation, our subdivision compared to what's being developed. And I know from when the homes were developed in the rest of the cul-de-sac where I was at, after living there for five years, there were some serious drainage problems that had to be addressed. And if you look at some of the stubs, if you look at each one of those stubs that Lynn was talking about, you can see, when you get down to the bottom of Cherokee, you can see that lot, it's, you have to go up a hill, there's a brief hill. And if you go down at the other end of Apache, the, the other people on the other side of Apache are as significantly lower elevation than where I'm at, even though I'm at the bottom of a hill. And what I'm, what I think is a concern is drainage, because I don't think all of those homes are going to be draining into the street. They're going to be draining towards us. And that area just below me, in the cul-de-sac that it butts me, that's significantly lower. And the land that is, that they're developing is significantly higher. And the density of the homes that they're going to be building in there will aggravate that situation because you're going to have more roof space, more cement for runoff. And I don't think all of that's going to go into the street, it's going to come our way. And there's, not only will I get it, but that area on the other end of Apache, the older cul-de-sac, that is very low there and they are very vulnerable to flooding if this is cut. And I, I think you need to look at the geography, it's almost like it's a bluff. It's significantly higher than the elevation there. I realize that you're all, we're all interested in the development of this area, but there's some, there's some other things besides the traffic issue, which is, I, I want, it would really help if you go to those streets and picture what that's going to look like at 7:30 to 8 o'clock in the morning, what Cherokee's going to look like with school buses and everybody emptying out of that subdivision. And just mentally get a picture of what that's going to look like. It's going to be a snarl. There's some other things that I know you're not interested in, so I won't spend very much time, but for 10 years, I have fed deer back in there. I go through 600 pounds of grain a month, sometimes more, it's all gone. I've had wild turkey, I have, there's frogs, you know, all that kind of stuff. I know that's not your business and you can't use that, but it's, there's an environmental impact that's going on here too, that I know you're not going to use that to enter into your decision. But it's not just, it's not just the roads, it's not just the drainage, it's the encroachment. And, you know, a lot of towns, they build these high-density type divisions in the center town and they make, they don't build the high-density stuff out on the periphery of the towns. And that's another concern I have, just as far as the ambiance of a university town. That's all I, that's my one.
My name is Arun Kumar and I live on the corner of Cherokee and Apache, so I'll see all the traffic. So I'll see all the 160 cars, I guess, come by my house. And it's a short street, you know, I, I'd say, I suspect it's about 300, 300 feet long, the Cherokee Drive. And I've lived there for 19 years in that neighborhood. And in 19 years, we've not seen one traffic accident that I can remember. Now, you know, I know he's going to do the development and, and, you know, we all want for him to succeed in his development, but I, I don't think it should be, I mean, I, I think it could, it could be done with goodwill. And so an exit to the north would help out. Now, I've, when you have an ice storm, and I see some of the traffic that tries to go up the hill on Cherokee, it's next to impossible. Right? So you'll have another 160 trying to make it up that one hill in front of my house. But, you know, that's, you know, I, I really would like for them to succeed and, you know, enhance the value of everybody's property, but I think they can do it with goodwill by, you know, getting a road to the north. Thank you.
The major issue here is, is the access to the subdivision and the exits from the subdivision. And I'd like to talk just a minute, a little more broadly about that. There's been some discussion about Garrid. It's obviously a future collector's street, current collector's street, ever since the bypasses were built. And Reed Road has not been discussed, it's obviously a collector's street, and Hospital Road is a collector's street. And Starkville is going to meet some of the potential that's been discussed in the, in the development groups, objective of getting more residential development from the developments going on out at the airport. There's going to be a need for the city to face up to the problem that this city does not have adequate collector's streets to satisfy the need. We all familiar with what goes on down in South Montgomery, there are no collector's streets from Academy Road all the way to Poorhouse Road that connect to anywhere else in the community. We're in a roadblock situation down there. Now, Garrid Road has not improved and it goes all the way from 25 to 82, or 389 to 82. I live on the north end of Hiwasi and I'm getting a good bit of that traffic. And as this proposal is developed now, the only access that comes to this subdivision comes off of Hiwasi Drive at Cherokee. And then it makes, makes a decision when it comes out.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your healthcare needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktobahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in healthcare.
Then they come along and add 78 units of path-through traffic. Now, one of the developers said he'd been working on this project for six years. In six years, he's had ample opportunities to buy access into one of those collector's streets as opposed to Hiwasi Drive. The other thing I want to mention is that, I want to ask a question of process, as you all know, if you approve this subdivision today, construction starts tomorrow, the bulldozer start rolling tomorrow. Because subdivision review is to permit the construction to go forward if it meets all the requirements of the subdivision regulations and the, and the community need. So if you approve it today, with all these, these agenda items not solved, it, it goes further, the motors will start rolling tomorrow. So I would urge you to either return it to the Planning Commission for further study or urge you to table it for further study. And let some of these issues that have been discussed tonight be resolved. I don't think they're going to be resolved by the presentation by the developer at this point, unless they've made another change since the last time we've talked. The other thing that I want to mention is that, that May the night, I want to know if you approve the covenants, if they're binding on their approval, because the draft covenants that we received on May the 9th provides the developer any opportunity to make any desired changes to the bylaws as, as, by 20%, 80% vote. By an 80% vote means that they have to sell 41 lots before they are relieved of control of the bylaws. They are the association until they sell 41 lots. And it says that the association can, can make any changes deemed appropriate to the bylaws by proper notice, but that the association would have a membership vote of 81, of, of 80% to do that. I think that the questions that have been asked and issues have been raised that in this particular case, that you need to make sure that you have some way of assuring that any changes in the standards that are going to be proposed tonight in a downward way, in the way of density, in the way of construction, in the way of housing, will not be permitted without it coming back to this board and to the Planning Commission for review and approval. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Could this be your last person to?
Yes, I would like.
Aye.
Hi. My name is Jackie Harris. My husband, James, and I live on the corner of Cheyenne and Apache. And we are really concerned about the safety issues that, health issues too, with that many houses. I know we can't do anything to stop it, but at least you all can look at being, that being the only entrance and the exit, right there at my driveway, 300 cars every morning or every evening. I would like for the board to not waive any of the city requirements, not do anything as far as making sure all the city ordinance are met before you make a decision on it. If it has to be a certain fee, make sure it's, it's there, you know, before you all vote on it. And ask that you just please drive by and just look and just think, just, just look at it as if it was your place where you live, would you want that many cars coming by every day and you had a five or six-year-old that plays out there? You know, it's just dangerous. Just likely you all to just consider out what we're asking. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Ms. Mayor, just one comment here, the speaker before Ms. Harris and was not introduced, my friend George Parsons, and you say, "Well, he sure spoke authoritative and so forth." Yes, he did. He is a city planner by training and practice, headed the Small Town Center and the School of Architecture for a number of years at Mississippi State and was a former governor's director of planning and policy for a number of years. So since he was not introduced, I thought I would make that notation.
Excellent. Thank you. Brings us to Stuart, you?
Good evening, Mayor. I want to reflect back just a little bit on where we've been and where we're going at Golden Triangle Airport. You know, the Golden Triangle Airport had its beginning here in Starkville in 1965, when a group of us realized that Starkville alone could not sustain or obtain commercial air service. And so we got a group together and went over to West Point. And then eventually on to Columbus and we put it together. And you might recall that we've had relatively good air service out here in this rural area, you might say, between Memphis, Birmingham and Jackson prior to 9/11. Then we lost most of our flights in both carriers, Northwest and Delta took bankruptcy. Today, there are three significant points about the Golden Triangle, I think, that make mention. One is that... One is that the GTI is only one of a double handful of airports across America that are self-sustaining. Most airports rely on city tax collections for their operations. Can you imagine that today, the Golden Triangle Airport area is a hotspot in the American economy, and it's becoming almost an economic miracle? Because what you see out there today is not the end of it. There's more to come. Three years from now, you will hardly be able to recognize the facility because of the service and the increased activity in the area. For example, we've just learned today that PACCAR plans to bring several thousand passengers a year into GTI to their research facility on the property there. In this morning's paper, the Starkville Daily News, David Thornell commented that it looks like we're going to have about 1,200 jobs out there around the airport. I sat down with Mac, Joe McHiggins, Friday afternoon. We see about 3,000 within the next three and a half to four years. So that's just some background. It is not my responsibility to select a successor, but I would like to offer some of the, to use some of the skills required of the candidate for the next man at the airport. I've been out there for 42 years, and so I think I know, have an idea anyhow. One, we need a person out there who's financially savvy, someone accustomed to working budgets that encompass a lot of large dollar amounts, managing the airport as a business. Second, the person should be an independent thinker, someone with a good imagination, an innovator, and not be afraid to express their thoughts. The board members need to think 10 to 30 years ahead. It would be most desirable for the candidate to have ties with the Washington delegation, as so much of our funding comes from the federal government. One of the needs will be someone who is familiar with international trade, someone who's traveled to Europe and to Asia, because more and more of our local industries are building on and planning, planning foreign ties. So they must be able to move their executives and clients with a minimum of hassle and opportunities for delays. And finally, it'd be best if we, it'd probably be nice to have a younger person, say somebody 35 to 45 years of age, that might could serve 20 or 35 years. For longevity on that board is a plus. Now, I have proposed to you a change in the code because I think that, one, we have made some real good progress at the Golden Triangle Airport, and our community is changing, and we need to address these changes. We need to broaden our horizons, take a long-range view, and do all that we can to enable you to find the most competent candidate to represent our city on the board, whether they come from inside the city or whether they come from inside the county. Adoption of this amendment could make a meaningful difference.
Less than 10 minutes? Excellent. Thank you. Any questions from the board members? So, Mr. Stuart Vance's presentation?
You have some big shoes to fill, Stuart.
I couldn't meet these requirements right yet, so. No, no. We just need to make sure that we get, get the best possible person out there that we can. There's too much happening out there.
And you certainly are not saying that there's nobody within the city of Starkville that might not meet those qualifications. I assume that you're saying, let's just expand our pool in the event we want to do something there.
My understanding is that we have two candidates right now who submitted resumes. Is that?
That's correct.
Yeah. That's a shame. We need, we need a.
And we've had this open for submission for, since March.
And very few people know about it.
Well, we've advertised. We can do what you can. And I think that there's been some personal solicitation on your part, people.
I have, I've been out talking to people, and I'm not just stuck on one person. I've, I've talked to a number of people.
I'll lend you this next time, and maybe you can hit on some people to, to do this.
Possibly we need to run some away, and so we need to take another, another way of advertising.
And we have that tonight on our agenda under board business. Don't know that we will do anything about it tonight, but we do have it there for discussion. And we appreciate your interest in coming forward.
Thank you very much.
This brings us up to the building department of moving it up. This concludes all of our public appearances. Ben, in regard to the Lee Carson request for preliminary approval of the Red Bud Springs subdivision.
Mr. Mayor, the item before you this evening is a request by Mr. Lee Carson for a preliminary plat proposal for Red Bud Springs, which is a 78-lot, single-family residential subdivision on 35 acres, which is located west of Apache and Hawassee Drives. Planning and zoning commission reviewed this at their meeting last week, and I guess the, the proposal, proposal includes the 78 lots in y'all's packet. Y'all should have received a set of the draft restrictive covenants, as well as architectural design guidelines, and some additional information, including, there was a petition that was included from the Indian Ridge subdivision, and there's also, this item was brought up during the planning and zoning commission meeting. Mr. Carson had used, had done some research on the adjacent subdivisions, covenants and restrictions, and had researched those and provided copies of those from the courthouse. These are the recorded copies that are also available before your reference. The property is zoned, it actually has three different zonings. It has R1 on the, predominantly on the eastern portion, R2 on about the westernmost third, and a little small corner, and the northwest corner of, of the property is zoned R5. And what he's done, rather than rezone the property to a PUD or to another type of zoning, he's proposed to work within the R1 and R2 requirements, and he's plotted lots that meet those requirements and specifications. The planning and zoning commission was, was presented the staff report, which included the findings from the, I believe we had about five or six staff review meetings, went through a long process with all the department heads, and plat changed over, over time. As it is now, there are two modifications that were recommended by staff to the planning and zoning commission. One of them, well, actually, both of them were revised slightly and onto the recommendations. I used a double underline to show the ones that came out of the planning and zoning commission meeting, but the, the board is allowed under Article 5, Section 7, to grant some minor modifications based on an innovative site design. And staff felt like Mr. Carson had presented an innovative staff design by using the contours of the property and, and maintaining the wooded character and not going in and clearcutting and grading before anything was built. And these two modifications are as follows. One is narrowing of a proposed bridge to 26 feet in lieu of the 31-foot minimum required. And Item B is the 40-foot paved radius turnarounds for the two cul-de-sacs less than 150 feet in length shall be allowed within a 40-foot radius right-of-way in lieu of the 50-foot radius required, so long as the utility easements are increased to 15 feet. I guess some of the issues that have been brought up by some of the homeowners are regarding access, and there's two access points to the subdivision from Cheyenne and from Cherokee Drives that are existing, platted, and, and were built over 20 years ago. There were some questions about drainage, and the city engineer looked at drainage, didn't feel like there was going to be an issue, although that will come up as the utility plans and, and those drawings are submitted for review when the actual infrastructure construction begins. Mr. Carson has chosen an arts and crafts bungalow style of construction, and he's included detailed design guidelines, which is, y'all can, y'all see in y'all's packet, which includes a lot of photos and a lot of graphics as well. Trying to think of the, is there anything other specific? The requirement on the cul-de-sacs was, was one of, of concern with the, with, with the road widths and with the cul-de-sacs for access by fire trucks as well as sanitation trucks. And the radiuses all conform to the minimum requirements, and, and the department heads have all signed off on the, on the plat as proposed. Trying to think if it was anything else that came up. Again, this is a final plat. The final, or excuse me, a preliminary plat, the preliminary plat allows the, the developer to begin infrastructure improvements, which water and sewer available in the area, extension of the road network, and once the infrastructure improvements are made, it would come back for a final plat review by the P&amp;Z as well as this board. There was a lot of information provided, and I think I covered most of the, the highlights. If there's any questions that y'all may have, I can try to answer them, and I'm sure Mr. Carson can probably answer them in a lot more detail as well.
Mr. Webb, first question's around drainage, and we heard some comments around a concern for drainage, and then Mr. Griffiths said that you don't have a concern about the drainage, and so now I'm confused about, about that. And so, one, kind of your assessment, and then, second, what protection do homeowners have towards, towards a situation that increases runoff to their property?
Yes, we've discussed the runoff situation with the developer, and he's planning on using the pond, the ditch to the south, and possibly the ditch to the north. As his intention for that runoff, we'll develop that further once he gets into his infrastructure design. He hasn't done any stormwater design yet, other than look at that as potential use for his potential itself.
So that work isn't required at this point to do a site plan? If drainage is, if runoff is increased on someone's property, do we have ordinances to protect a homeowner? Could you talk a little bit about that, just so that we understand it?
The new stormwater ordinance requires that no more water, it's got to be the same quantity of water runs off post-development as prior to, meaning that whatever, whatever's running off your site now, it can't go off any faster or any more than it does at the time. And what that would make you do is you'd have to build some type of detention system so that that water will, will stay on-site and then runoff at a certain regulated quantity. And that's what he's talking about, possibly using those ditches and that fence line that you see there in the middle of the site, and some method at the north part to do that. But we have to always engineer it as we develop this infrastructure wise.
Ben, can you talk a little bit about, we had a question about our covenant binding, and I guess one of the concerns is raised is, may sound good, the covenants today, but they can just be changed tomorrow after we make this approval. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, sir, and that's, and that's, that is a true statement. However, the covenants, that's true for all covenants that are, that are, that are proposed. The, at the beginning of the project, the developer obviously has the control or whoever is designated. As that ownership changes, as properties are sold and that changes, and I believe someone said 41 residences, then the percentage, I guess the majority would change. Those are standard covenants as far as control and architectural review and, and things of that nature. I mean, that's, those are pretty much standard. The city does not enforce covenants. We ask to review the covenants, and actually, on, on most preliminary plats, they're not required until the final plat. In this case, Mr. Carson's provided them at the preliminary stage to also include, you know, to better define what he's proposing, and also to detail his, his design guidelines for the residences as well as for, as for the site development. Again, they're pretty standard. That's true for all the covenants that, that come before the board, the language as far as when the ownership occurs. It's not to say that they're going to be changed, because they could be changed, and I think that's been the case in the past, where, I, I know Vice Mayor Perkins uses an example of, of maintenance of, of roads or, or roadways or, or other open space or common-owned areas, and, and over time, maybe a homeowner association decides they don't want to maintain those, but they want to dedicate them to the city. And I know that's a concern that we've had in the past in looking at those things. And they could basically vote themselves out of, out of maintaining that and try to dedicate it to the city to, to maintain those. So those things can occur, but we don't approve the covenants. We review them, we make, we offer, we offer some suggestions, and, and Mr. Carson has included some that, that myself and Mr. Webb had, had suggested as far as for design. They're required to be recorded at the same time as the plat is recorded, but as far as enforcement, the city does not enforce those covenants, and that will be the responsibility of the homeowner association, which is detailed in, in them.
And Ben, that's the critical point. Time after time, over the years, we will be contacted by various subdivisions saying, we need to enforce these covenants, and people still have trouble realizing that the city does not enforce covenants.
Yes, sir.
And original covenants can change.
Yes, sir.
Lee, I heard a couple of things from the homeowners, and, and some of them sounded like really good compromises, and didn't know if you had a thought on inclusion of members of the, the subdivision as part of the architectural review committee?
I am not against exploring that idea. If, I think three may be too many. One representative might be appropriate, but I'm not, I mean, it's not a shut door with me, so I would be willing to entertain that.
And I apologize, I don't remember how many are currently on the review committee, or proposed to be on the review committee.
There are three.
Three.
Myself, my father, and Mr. Ford.
There was a, I, I think there's some confusion about the size of the house, houses, and I know people have said the word 1,400 square feet, and I, I know you have as well, but there's actually two different minimum sizes of houses. Can you describe what that is, and indeed, are they hard and fast minimums, or can they change as well?
No, our intention, first of all, our original intention was always to build in that 1,500 to 2,000 square foot range. Now, as far as legally what is set in the, the covenants, you know, it, we dropped it to 400, I mean, 1,200 heated space for the R2 lots, but the R1 lots, we have kept it at 1,400 heated. But let me stipulate that under roof, those sizes are larger. We've got 1,400 square feet minimum under roof for the R2 lots, and we've got 1,800 under roof for the R1. And that's to better, we were trying to communicate that, we revised that after our meeting, because mostly R1 lots, well, all the R1 lots are on the east side, and we wanted to communicate with the neighbors that that is our intention. That's why we've had it, we've had it posted on our website, 1,400 for a long time. So we don't, we don't anticipate ever going below that 1,200, and that, I don't, I don't want to be held to this, but I don't anticipate building something that small. Our intentions are to, to build a little bigger than that.
What will the covenant say as, as to those minimums? And I think what you're hearing is that...
It says very specifically, no less than 1,200 in the R2 lots, and no less than 1,400 in the R1.
And where, if I was sitting in the audience and I hear, and, you know, I don't have an intention, and I, you know, hope that I'll never have to go, that, that seems to not be consistent with a covenant that says that you can't build smaller than that.
Well, the covenant, if, the covenant says no less than 1,200, so let me just leave it at that, so before I confuse anyone. That's for the R2 lots, but the R1 lots, no less than 1,400 heated, no less than 1,800 under roof, because it's also states, states in the covenants that every house has to have a front porch. So there's, there's other space besides heated space that we considered occupied space, exterior rooms, porches, things like that.
Garage, yeah.
Potentially.
Exactly. Before closing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
I'd like to make some brief comments. Mr. Mayor, to my colleagues here at the table tonight, there have been some very good comments made by the homeowners of this Indian Ridge Homeowners Association. They have some very valid concerns. These are people who have, have homes, they built these homes with the intention that they'll be in, in quiet peace and be able to enjoy... be in quiet peace and be able to enjoy a good quality of life. And here we have a proposed subdivision that wants to locate in this part of town and wants to dump the traffic out into some existing streets, and these streets are not extended. And it would seem to me that what the homeowners have said is a very valid request, and that request is, why didn't these developers get them an access road that would go out to Reed Road or to Garrett Road? Now, I think the city should have a valid concern here tonight. Now, as the young lady that lives on her pantry said earlier, what if there's a major emergency? You know, we've got the fire truck that comes down, probably send a truck from Station 3, will come down Hawassee southbound, gonna have to go all the way to the back of that development. What if there's a major catastrophe at Hawassee and Cherokee? I think that the developers should consider that request. I am not satisfied that it was ever the intent of the city in the past for these two streets to be extended. Why do we have to extend the streets? Now, given my history on this board, there's been some streets that had through traffic, Maple, Red Bud, Douglas MacArthur. What do we do? We closed it. And why did the city leave Douglas MacArthur open? Because it wanted to give an access route if the fire truck had to come down Stark Road as opposed to rerouting that truck all the way back around through Avenue of Patriots. Now, I am not convinced that we need to extend Cherokee. I am not convinced that we need to extend Cheyenne. If this developer wants to build these units over there, he needs to get his own access route. They can buy a lot, I mean, with this kind of money, $200,000 homes, $200,000 home, they can buy a lot over there on Garrett Road. They can talk with the budding property owner over there on Reed Road. So these are some very valid concerns. It seems to me that, Mr. Attorney, under our police powers, under the 10th Amendment that gives the city the right to promote the health, safety, and welfare, we ought to be concerned about the health and safety issue. All this traffic dumps here, just a bald, up-naked point. And another thing here, you know, and here we all want to waive requirements. I mean, why does, I mean, the staff, the planner, and others want to waive a requirement for a bridge that's 26 feet wide when the minimum requirement's 33 feet, and yet, it's on here, it's 31 feet? Additionally, we want to waive the requirement for a 40-foot cul-de-sac, these two small cul-de-sac, without having the 50-foot width requirement. I mean, we got to follow the ordinance. I mean, why we want to have an ordinance, we're gonna follow one. Like the Supreme Court says, if you, a rule that is not enforced is no rule. An ordinance that is not enforced is no ordinance. Now, what we need to do, we need to either send this matter back to planning and zoning, or we need to deny this preliminary plan. Why? Because it presents a health and safety issue. There's been nothing that's been presented tonight to show that it was extent of a prior board to extend Cherokee and Cheyenne. There have been issues down on the south side of town, on the south part of town, on Shadowwood. We went to the Court of Appeals to keep from extending that road through. So why can't we give these same hard-working citizens and taxpayers the same relief on this side of town? Now, we need to be able to treat all citizens alike similarly. Now, and, you know, the city planners say the property is on R1, R2, R5, well, look at the safety issues here. These are some valid concerns. I need, I am of the strong belief that we need to treat all people similarly, that are similarly situated. We need, do not need to waive any requirements. Why would we waive the requirements? This developer's gonna spend this kind of money and wants to dump all this traffic back on Hawassee. Buy them a road through Garrett, buy a road through Reed Road. So with that being said, Mr. Mayor, at the proper time, I'd like to offer a motion that we not extend, that we not extend Cherokee and Cheyenne, and that that's because of being a safety issue. So, you have the floor.
Can I respond to that?
No, sir, I want to hear what he has to say.
Well, first of all, I think you hit the nail on the head. First of all, it's, if you're wanting to give the same fairness to all people, then how can you say that, you know, you're denying us access with two legal streets that go into our property? Second of all, how, you know, we have explored these other options, and you think we have not. We have looked at them very carefully, and it's our opinion that it is not appropriate to try to go to Gerard Road or go to Hospital Road. We feel like the two accesses are very viable. They're, they meet, the streets meet the width requirements that the city has, and actually, Hawassee is 40 feet wide. It is considered a collector's street, and it is more than capable of handling the traffic. It is not a safety issue. We have looked at it with the fire department, we have looked at it with all the city officials, and everyone comes to the same conclusion, that it does meet all the regulations, there's no safety hazard whatsoever involved. So we have carefully, I just, I guess I get, you know, the insinuation is, we have not looked at these options. We have looked at them very carefully. I'm not against, because I hear everyone very loud and clear, I'm not against exploring those options again, potentially, but I, you know, we have looked at them again, and we've come to the same conclusion, that we feel like that the entrances into the property are the most appropriate ones, for many reasons. So I, I don't quite understand, you know, what's the magic number between what's safe and not safe of how many cars or how much traffic into a neighborhood? That there is very little traffic over there now. There's the appearance that there's a lot, but there is very little traffic through there now, as it is. And what we are proposing is not increasing the traffic to an extent that it's not safe or viable. So I, I just, we, you know, I think, I'll just stop right there.
Mr. Webb, there are two exceptions in here, and one of them, well, they both kind of confused me. We have a 33-foot minimum bridge requirement. Is that an accurate statement?
We have a 33-foot road requirement, normally in urban bridges. Yes.
Why do we have that as a standard? Why is the standard 33 feet? I'm just wondering why we are granting exceptions on these different items, if there's a reason for us to have a standard of something larger?
The standard was passed by previous board, of course. I'm not, I don't know why that was chosen as the standard. I just know when I first started here, it was 33 foot, and I walked back to current. And the reason that Ben and I and the other members considered waiving the 33 foot at the bridge was for possibly a traffic calming device, but we also made mention of it for sure, so that the planning commission would know that it is not meeting standard, and the board will know that we're doing this. And we told Mr. Carson that it very likely wouldn't be approved, but that we would present it as, so.
Same question around the radius. Why do we have 50-foot radius requirements on those cul-de-sacs?
The, now, there's some confusion as to the 50-foot radius cul-de-sac versus a 50-foot right-of-way. The requirement, the standard is 50-foot right-of-way, which is total property-owned radius with the cul-de-sac inside there, of course. The minimum, the actual minimum cul-de-sac is 40-foot radius. And that is, is overruled by the fire code. The fire code calls for a 48-foot radius cul-de-sac on any road that actually requires a cul-de-sac. They don't require a cul-de-sac at the end of streets that are less than 150-foot long. The two cul-de-sacs, anything that is proposed that are actually 40 feet or less than 150 feet long, as required by the city ordinance. We do require 50-foot minimum radius on all cul-de-sacs. And that was also one that Mr. Griffith spoke about, where we, in lieu of the 40-to-50-foot radius cul-de-sac right-of-way, we asked for an additional five feet of easement, which would give us 15-foot total easement for our utilities. And that was the only concession we were willing to make on that. We also told Mr. Carson that that might not, and probably wouldn't be approved either, if that grid would pass it.
If there's a logistics problem with approving that, I have no problem with just stating that it has to be, the bridge has to be the 33 feet, or the cul-de-sac has to have the 50-foot right-of-way. I mean, I really have no problem with that.
Right.
You see where I stand on it, but I just don't have a problem with changing if we can't get over the logistics of it.
Roger, you've obviously looked at this. What is your thought from bringing a fire truck through there? Are we creating problems by having it be smaller than what we normally expect, or is this not an issue?
This is, by code, is not an issue in what Mr. Webb referred to as the 100-feet foot date. The code does not require the turnaround or anything that's less than 100 feet.
So no issues from a fire department to allow that exception? Or variance, or whatever we're calling it?
As long as it is less than 100 feet foot to the backside of the cul-de-sac, we do not have any, we didn't have any grounds to require that from the fire department.
But you're comfortable you can get a truck in there and take care of any unlikely event of a fire?
Yes, sir.
Sharon, how about you with sanitation? We all square on?
Mr. Webb's recommendation. Mr. Webb? I'm sorry, I'm being too silent.
I have a question. Am I not under the impression that you're gonna have 74 lots, is that correct?
There's 78 currently proposed.
78 lots, but am I not also correct that under the current zoning, that you could potentially have 120-something lots?
133.
133 lots?
Fifty-eight and a half percent of what's legally allowed.
So this is a whole lot less, not quite half as much legally could be put on the plate.
We started with, you know, we started with much more, and we feel like this is the most appropriate thing to do with the property.
Any other discussion? Roy, is your motion, I believe, being made?
Just coming back to the Architecture Committee. So are you proposing a change to the, and I know they don't get officially completed till the end, but it sounds like in good faith, you're wanting to talk to the neighbors about that and include at least a representative?
I think a representative would be a positive thing.
And then the minimums on the size of the houses are already in the current covenant?
They're already in there.
You understood the drainage requirements, that you cannot increase runoff on anyone's houses by?
From, yes, from day one. We considered the drainage as a large issue, and that's why we made retention areas for that.
Thank you.
The question here is for authorization for work, I'm looking wrong thing. A preliminary plat approval for Mr. Carson's. Mr. Faver, do you know of any reason under law that the city could deny approval of the preliminary plat request?
Under law? This is, in my understanding, is a landlocked, preliminary plat approval, no, because it complies with all the city codes and requirements, according to Mr. Griffith. Of course, Mr. Perkins full well knows that, and he's correct, that the city can't exercise its police power for the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens pursuant to specific findings of fact. So I don't know of any legal reason right now that the city could deny a preliminary plat approval.
Mr. Faver, now, you can't sit here and convince us tonight that there is something of city record, official record, that says that those two streets were to be extended, Cherokee and Cheyenne.
Well, Mr. Perkins, that's not what I said. What I said was-
I know what you're saying, but I-
The issue that I was asked about was, what was on here is, was there anything legally that I know of that could prevent this preliminary plat approval? That's what's the issue before the board.
I understand the question, but my question, as a board member to you, as the city attorney, is, do you have anything to share with us that, as to whether those roads can be extended? I mean, is there anything that legally requires us to extend those roads?
Well, I mean, at this time, from what I know, the property is landlocked.
How you know it's landlocked? I mean, is that assumption your part?
I didn't get to finish. I said, I'm assuming for the purposes of my statement, what I've been told is the property was landlocked, so there's no other access to it. I don't know that for a fact. I've never been on the property myself. But assuming for the purposes of my statement that it is landlocked, I don't see any reason why, legally, why the city could deny access to this property from a city street. But as I say, the question before the board, is the preliminary plat approved at this time?
No, you've made enough already.
We have a copy of the, of his document downloaded at noon, and there's no numbers in here? That's your covenant?
You have to get the design guidelines. It's part of those covenants. They have the numbers specified.
Wait, wait, you keep breaking laws, you don't-
Wait, wait, he's making a motion.
You said it's, it's-
He said, state law, make the motion.
That's what I asked the city attorney.
Make the motion, I'll second.
You can make it.
Make the motion.
Make the motion.
Tell him it's mine for all.
It's your fault.
I'll take it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take a five-minute reset.
Hey, just as we're getting started, just to confirm on the square footage of the houses, covenants are clear. No less than 1,200 in R2 zoning, no less than 1,400. That's what you're representing in good faith today.
Hold that to me from ever and ever.
Mr. Mayor, I haven't recognized. Mr. Perkins? Mr. Mayor, I move that this matter be taken under advisement to give these developers a further opportunity to try to work out some of these concerns with the residents and homeowners of the Indian Ridge subdivision. So I move that we take this matter under advisement.
We have a motion to take this under advisement? Do we have a second to the motion? Do we have a second to the motion? Do we have a second to the motion to take this under advisement? If there's no second, it fails black of second. Do we have any other motion pertaining to this particular preliminary plat? Do we have any other motion pertaining to this preliminary plat? Do we have any other motion pertaining to this preliminary plat?
It's about like molasses with Mr. Corby here tonight. Yeah, I'm ready.
Mr. Mayor and Board of All, I'm going to take the motion to consider the request on Mr. Lee Carr for preliminary plat approval of the Red Bull's prime subdivision.
Do we have a second to this motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will have plenty of discussion.
Discussion, Ms. Mayor.
Pardon me?
Discussion, please, here. Ms. Mayor, very briefly, this motion that's being offered for approval, this preliminary plat allows these exceptions in this proposed subdivision. There's no reason why this city should allow these exceptions. And again, this motion treats, in my opinion, the residents of In-N-Out differently from others that we have taken up for consideration in the past, Shadowwood and Green Oaks, and of course, we see plenty more neighborhood issues coming for this board, and we need to give these residents some relief. And of course, we need to ensure that no requirements of the city are waived with regard to this matter, and I wish that this board would not approve this motion for approval of the preliminary plat in light of all the concerns that have been raised tonight.
Any other discussion?
Ms. Mills, did the motion include those changes that he's talking about, or did they did include them?
Now, he said it included changes. I mean, the motion, from the way I understand it, it still allows for the twenty-six-feet width bridge and for the two cul-de-sac, he just motioned to approve the preliminary plat. Again, I mean, I don't understand why the city's making an exception on follow its own ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
It was my understanding that Mr. Carson said that he had no problem going back to the original width. Let me look at it, was it thirty? Going back to the thirty-one and the fifty, is that correct? Is that not what you said, Mr. Carson?
That is what I said.
All right. So, I second it with that understanding that we were going back to the original requirement.
Is there further discussion before I call for a vote?
It's thirty-three.
Did you accept all that, all of them, Mills?
It's thirty-one for pavement, thirty-three for curb.
Is it thirty-one or thirty-three?
Which one is it? Thirty-one or thirty-three?
It's thirty-one for pavement, thirty-three back the curb.
Mr. Webb said thirty-three. Ms. Webb, which one is it?
Thirty-three, back the curb.
Okay, so, is it thirty-three in the motion, thirty-one in the motion?
It's thirty-three in the motion.
Thanks for the clarity. Thanks, Mr. Webb.
Is there further discussion? We will now vote. We will show by hands, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, motion passes, Mr. Carson. Thank you. Thank you, Ben. We have another presentation by Mr. Monax and Clyde, where's Clyde? I saw him earlier. Don't trip over that computer cord.
Where's Clyde? Huh? Where he's always? Is this what you're asking? He's always coming.
You got this, because I can't have that. We got that.
What are you doing?
Pass that before he's placed right here.
All right, sit down. Give us a report.
You're not going to understand?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Board of Alderman, since our last meeting, which was roughly, I don't know, six, eight weeks ago, y'all did appoint a committee, and we do appreciate your point is that you're doing well of you. You've been, I'm glad to report, been busy, and looking at ordinances and one thing and another. And I would like to thank the help, the assistance we have from Lynn Sprole, Ben Griffiths, and Nikki Lowry. They've been very helpful in this process. I did meet Mr. Lyle this afternoon, and we're also glad to have him on board as a code compliance officer. And I would say this is an ongoing process of what we're going to discuss and present tonight, and just a portion of what perhaps will come. As we met and subcommittees for the last three or four weeks, I think we came to one conclusion, and that is that we have everything in place. And I wouldn't digress just a moment, talk about ordinances. I was surprised about how many ordinances we have, and I was probably have good ordinances. And I don't know why I thought that these were not even existent, but they are, and as you told us a few years ago at planning of the voting commission, that you better get something you can enforce. Now, these are enforceable ordinances, and we have now code compliance officer, but the last gap that we lack in this process is, I'm gonna let Clyde talk about that, and Clyde, if you would.
Brevity being the soul of wit, I will be brief. Item one is the one I want to cite here. I'm not gonna read it to you, you read it yourself, it's very clear, very direct, very forthright. The committee was emphatic and unanimous in its concept here of the necessity of getting a hearing officer, or an administrative hearing officer, an assistant city judge, or some person to whom the code compliance officer can bring his files and his material to get the codes enforced. We can call this a Giuliani gambit. Mayor Giuliani made a very clear and direct statement about what needed to be done with ordinances, enforce them, get them out there and get them enforced. We have the ordinances in place, let's enforce them. One way to get this moving would be to come forth with an administrative hearing officer or an assistant city judge, so that we can get the action moving on that. The committee was absolutely unanimous and energetically unanimous on this one, and we urge you to proceed with moving in that direction, not with all deliberate speed, because often deliberate speed is more deliberation than it is speed, and so we need to do that. Too many people in this town cavalierly disregard the ordinances particularly involving litter and junk mobiles, junk automobiles, and other things that are, that need to be taken care of. So, we urge you to move forward. Lynn Sprole has already indicated that she has been moving with the Stennis Institute toward looking at this concept of the hearing officer, administrative officer. Let's do it now. And that's about, I'm gonna have one thing more to add after Richard does his part.
Okay, that we also request that the city require property owners renting or leasing apartments, condominiums, and homes and dwellings to provide the tenants with, in writing, with the owner's requirements for disposal of garbage and trash. I think that right there is a problem that needs to be addressed, in fact, it is not. I doubt very assertive anyone, I say anyone, very few property owners require or even tell any renter or leasing what he expects from them for his property. Some obviously. I said few. I didn't say, I said a few. You may be in that few, you may not, I don't know, but you said you are, okay. All right, and sure that all rental lease agreements include attached a copy of the summary of the city ordinance. And number three, and the last one, is the city place a summary of ordinances affecting garbage, trash, litter, and junk automobiles and tilted mailings in January, May, and August. So, that's a summary.
That would give it out there by the way.
Pardon?
That would just shift motion out.
And of course, it would be a summary, it'd have to be a one-seat, because postage being forty-one cents, if you have a luminous package there, it's gonna be fifty for one cent, and you know, we don't want to increase the postage. But nonetheless, this is what our recommendations are tonight, gentlemen, and as I said, this is an ongoing process. Excuse me. I'm sorry, Dan, I was gonna pop. We will be back later on with other recommendations. Again, we appreciate your concern, and I think, again, am I interrupting the mic? I'm sorry.
Right. The mayor was asking for clarification of what you were saying. It's impossible to clarify what Richard said.
I think it written pretty well.
The one other thing that we had, we'd also discussed this, and Chance McDavid came in last, at our last meeting, from the chamber. The Chamber of Commerce will be including, putting together packets, twenty-three hundred of them, I believe, sometime next week, to be distributed to new MSU students and transfers, new freshmen, so on. We would like to put together a very brief statement, which essentially would summarize the junk litter ordinances, and the pet, the pet control ordinance, and give these to the chamber to put in those packets. This would probably require an expenditure of maybe six dollars in paper from the city and some copying on one of Xerox machines. And so, and I've volunteered to digest the ordinances, so that we can do what needs to be done on both sides of a half sheet of paper, so for each sheet of paper, we can get two of these, two reams of paper, basically.
And that's more of an administrative thing for what they're proposing here tonight, something. And really would not, PC suggests, the only thing might need to take board action would be requiring some of us that have properties to include the requirements of where to put your garbage and trash and that sort of thing.
It'd probably need to get the city attorney to take a little look at that.
Take a look at that, if it can be done administratively.
That has to be an ordinance.
Yeah.
Well, I guess the real question is, do you all agree to the expenditure of a couple reams of paper? And I won't even charge you for my time for digesting these few ordinances, so that they can at least get to the chamber, so they can stuff them in the packet. But I think they're gonna do that midweek next week.
That's not a big deal.
Well, that may not be, but I think we need some approval, so if y'all can nod or grunt, do something.
Mayor can take a couple of reams of paper out of his budget, so.
It's there.
And Clyde, damn, not worth anything anyway.
Right.
But now, again, that's an administrative issue that we can handle at the mayor's office.
Two is another matter.
Clyde, Richard, a couple of questions. Appreciate what you've done, looking for a whole lot more. How do you, if we, and if we establish a new ordinance requiring that property owners do this, whether they be commercial or residential rental, et cetera, have y'all thought through about how that would be enforced? And is this an appropriate time to start thinking more about that rental registry again, where we're able to work with these property owners and basically enforce all sorts of ordinances and regulations?
Well, I understand it now, the electricians of the code, building committee, building code folks can go into a house and say, you know, this doesn't meet code for electricity, right, or electrical, or this, that, and the other. Is that what you're talking about? And then what was...
Just how do you expect this to be enforced? I guess I'm a little uncomfortable just having a, an ordinance out there that says that this must be done with no appropriate steps to be able to follow up. I just don't want to have an empty ordinance.
Like what? I don't quite understand what you're...
Well, how would we enforce whether a homeowner, landlord required, you know, actually did this, gave them a copy of the things, and included in their lease? And I just want y'all to think through that as we get closer to that...
I don't know how you monitor that, I really don't. We've thought about that a little bit, but I don't know how you would monitor that you gave your tenants a sheet of paper saying this is what the ordinance is, and not come back on you, is what I would do, what I would recommend. We have a code compliance officer, your property is, you're ultimately responsible, your property. Is that right or not?
So, well, I think...
But he's asking how you gonna check it, and then how you gonna forward?
Check what? What are we checking?
Check to see whether or not the people owning or leasing and renting and so-called apartments provide in writing to all the tenants this.
I don't know, I don't know. This is not an ordinance, I think this has to be a voluntary situation.
If y'all just think through that, whether it's voluntary, whether it's mandatory, and come through that, and then...
Mandatory, how you gonna check? I mean, I can't, you can't...
I think, I think it's, one of those things is almost self-fulfilling. If a property owner does not provide this information to a lessee, and if the lessee then gets nailed for non-compliance with the real ordinance, it's already in place, then that goes to the code compliance officer, and the lessee is still responsible. The lessee is still responsible, because again, ignorance of the law is no excuse.
Okay. On the first one, as it relates to an assistant city judge, have we talked with Judge Esche and what his thought processes are around that? Because we've expanded the court days to four days specifically to deal with these type of court cases.
We did talk about this before we decided to go in this direction, and the reason for that is that this would be a limited administrative kind of hearing, and would not interfere with the ongoing activities of city court. It'd be a very specialized kind of thing, would deal simply with ordinances of this sort, pet ordinances perhaps, and the kinds of things that are, I would say, less dangerous or less important matters.
To answer your question, this was discussed at length, and decided, well, unless you can get Judge Esche to expand or extend his hours, so to speak, or his, you don't want to include people who have, you know, tires in the yard, or let their garbage cat out, from the same group of people, murderers, rapists, and, you know, thieves and all this kind of stuff, well, I mean, that's not the same type of situation that merits...
There is precedent too, for what we suggest here. A precedent in Alabama, precedent in Florida, precedent in various places.
Memphis, we all know about Memphis, for sure.
In Memphis, yeah.
Y'all just may want to include him in your team as we get this set up and get his guidance, and Roy Carpenter's and others, just so that...
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktobahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating thirty years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
We can decriminalize, we can put one of the hearing officers, so we're in exploratory phase right now, trying to get some other, there's some other cities that do this, not in Mississippi, but there are some other places, so I'm trying to flush all that out before we bring it forward.
Great.
Thank you, gentlemen. It brings to board business, and the first item on board business, deployment of advocates to the library board, board of adjustments and appeal, parks and recognition, and discussion of the Golden Triangle Regional Airport, which we have, I think, two proposals for that. And I believe in your package, you have the various individuals that apply, we got, I think, one for each one of the positions, except for the Golden Triangle Regional Airport Board, and we have two that apply for that.
Is Ms. Cole here tonight? Or, I know Mr. Morland's not, Ms. McCarthy, or Mr. Bell? I don't think so. I'd move approval of Mary Catherine Cole to the position on the staff of the library board.
Do you want to take one at a time?
You want to just raise all at once? And also to appoint Dan Morland to the park commission for the term that starts July one, to Patricia McCarthy to the board of adjustments and appeals to start July one, two thousand and six, and Larry Bell to the board of adjustments and appeals to start on July first.
We have a motion, do we have a second? All those that have heard the motion, that are in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, aye. And should we extend the Golden Triangle Regional Airport Board for at least another month and do some more advertising regarding that?
I think so, too.
So, we can just leave that off at the present time.
Does anyone have any objections to that?
All right, we'll move on. Consideration of installation of two speed tables on Hawisi for speed control devices.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I request for this matter to be placed on the agenda, and I'd like for our honorable city engineer to come down and explain this matter to us and give some justification as to why this matter should be approved, and hopefully, if you hear from Mr. Webb, you'll give unanimous approval.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Perkins. In view of the development that we just approved, and the inclusion of Hawisi to the safe route to school program, which is coming up, and also existing speeding problems that we've had on Hawisi Drive, I would recommend that we use this as a model for putting our speed tables that we discussed earlier in the year, putting two of them on Hawisi to make it safer for, and when we have the bicyclist and the people walking as far as the safe route to school, as well as to slow down... as the safe route to school, as well as to slow down existing traffic that has been a problem for years. And hopefully, we'll also slow down the numbers of new traffic that we're going to have. I put in your packet a, a little summary of, and with sketches on the, the speed tables, approximate locations and cost, and a couple of photographs of some that are actually in place in other cities. And these, these speed tables would be total 22 foot long. They start out with a taper on each end of six foot going up to a flat, a flat spot of about 10 foot wide or 10 foot long. So, the table would be a six foot slope, 10 foot flat, and then six foot down. And it'd be a total of about four inches in height, which would make it very uncomfortable someone going over the prescribed speed limit if they hit that speeding. It has been effective in other cities, it's cut it down, the speeding down from anywhere from eight to 15 percent. And it is recommended for this type of installation with speed limits of 30 miles per hour or less. The cross section is on the last sheet, the approximate locations are shown on the, the colored drawing in the, with the star. There's two required on this particular street because there's a stop sign at Cherokee, three way stop sign at Cherokee and Hawesi. And about, just a little over midway from that stop sign to Garrett Road, there's a steep incline that goes down, down a hill across a bridge. We'd need to put one on either side of that so that we wouldn't create a dangerous situation by having one too close to that, that hill. We'd need to put it about from the hill midway between the hill and Cherokee Drive at the stop sign, and then another one midway between the, the hill and Garrett Road would be the locations. We haven't, there's a, there's a fairly good, actually, there's two different locations in each place that where there's not a driveway adjacent to that. We would, the requirements are not to put them close to driveways or intersections or fire plugs and manholes. So, we'd have to locate them on the site, so to speak.
Mr. Mayor, I move that two speed tables be installed on Hawesi Drive for speed control devices at the location expressed by our city engineer.
Second. Do we have any idea what these are going to cost us, Bill?
Yes, sir, around 1,500.
1,500 each. We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, show your hands. One, two, three. Okay. All those opposed, nay, none opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb.
Yes, sir.
The next item is that of consideration of finding a fact and amendment to the contract between the Oktobah County Humane Society and Starfall. Have you found the fact?
I didn't find the fact. The board, last time that we were here, commissioned me to go ahead and amend, to draft an amendment to the original agreement. The board at that time felt that it was necessary to accomplish the goals of both parties to amend the original agreement, to outline some further duties that the city was going to undertake. And I felt at the time that we couldn't undertake those duties pursuant to the, the original contract. And so, Ms. Boyd provided me a list of things that the sanitation department could do, and I've incorporated those into the proposed amendment that I drafted for your consideration here. And Ms. Boyd has seen these, and these are her, all the nine things that are listed here, are the things that Ms. Boyd presented to me.
Something's not, all a little post.
Okay, well, as I say, Alderman, I defer to Ms. Boyd on that because I basically took her recommendations and took, changed some of the words around. I didn't change the meanings, just changed some of the words around, didn't change the duties or obligations of the meaning, but I have to defer to her on those things that are listed here.
We can thrash it now, we can take it under advisement, thrash it later, it's got some strange things in it.
Well, that was your idea.
Well, I know it, but I did not write it.
Well, I think you should have written it.
I guess so.
You knew, but you'll be strange, the whole thing was strange.
If these amendments are going to come to us, they need to be in legal form. We don't need to be spending time at this table trying to write amendments to a legal matter. It needs to go to the city attorney, it's going to outback, it needs to be considered, and it'd be in proper legal format, if there's going to be some concern.
Mr. Perkins, maybe I wasn't clear. She did present it to me, and I incorporated those duties that she felt her department could provide as best I could into this legal document and put it into words that I, best I could understand as to what she was saying that her department could provide.
Yeah, I move we take this under advisement until the next meeting where we will consider it, hopefully, in final fashion.
Do we have a second? Motion, second, that we take this under advisement. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. All those opposed? All right, the next item is consideration of authorization to approve the legal work necessary to accept the dedication of the streets of Cedar Creek, such as the city of Starfall.
Mr. Mayor, this is something I placed on the agenda, and Mr. Webb has provided a letter and, and copies of our minutes at our table here today. Alderman Perkins and I have talked about private drives for a long time at this table, and this is a private drive imperative from Alderman Perkins in our last reapportionment. This is, if you read through here, it's the last portion of Cedar Creek Lane, which was never dedicated to the city. And if you look at point five, under order number eight, November 19, 2002, that's what I'm requesting that we allow our city attorney or authorize our city attorney and appropriate city staff to begin the process of, and, which is to, it says, "Until such time, the city and developer or the homeowners living on said road park shall agree upon the requirements necessary for developer and/or homeowners to meet to improve said road park, convey said road park to the city." So, I'm asking for the authorization for the city attorney and appropriate staff to begin that process.
Is this not something that was taken in from the city that was still part of a private development? Is that right?
Well, see.
It never got completed or something?
Well, it's been done in multiple phases over the years. It started out in the county and then came into the city, and then it, in the city, it started as a development with a private drive, portion of which has been accepted as a public street, and the end of it is still a private drive and still gravel. And so, you have the end of a street off of, well, you have a private drive off the end of a public street, which is, and of course, we have residents down there that don't realize they live on a private drive, saying, "I was told the city's going to pave this street." What, what's going on? And it's still a private drive.
Mr. Webb. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Webb, refresh my recollection, you know, when we took that first part in, assuming I'm coming from, from Hospital Road down Reed Road, past Lewis, take a left on Cedar Creek, you know, when we took the first part in, was that, refresh my memory, wasn't that some concern on the part of this board about whether or not you wanted to take in that second part that the gentleman from Warren is talking about? In other words, once you go down Cedar Creek, he's talking about the part that goes to the right. Didn't the prior board have some reluctance about wanting to take that part in, and it's so, isn't that's why we just only took in that first part?
Yes, the second part, which is part Mr. Webbers is referring to, was specifically committed.
Correct.
From the improvements that were done. The first part was annexed into the city as, it was a county street, a county road, and was annexed into the city. And at that time, any road that was a county road that was annexed into the city became a city street. So, it was a city street when it was brought in. Then the homeowners came up and petitioned to pave it and make some improvement, which we did, but specifically left out the, that phase two, because at the time it started, we weren't sure, we didn't know he was willing to suck the pace until some of the homeowners came up and built it. And at that time, we realized he had in fact cut a road, finished that road out, and he then had sold most of his lots, and he put a little obligation to bring that road up to the standard of even phase one. So, that, that's kind of where we are, and I don't believe any of those people out there should be surprised that they're on a private drive because they've been maintained all these years, since '02. But, Mr. Webb said, we, we have a procedure, if that is what you want to do, but the procedure being, of course, that they have to survey and dedicate the right of way to the city prior to us doing it.
Does this, I'm confused, and I guess I wasn't around in the earlier discussion, but does this phase two meet city requirements for a street?
No, sir.
Let me.
The phase one didn't meet city requirements.
Let's, let's back up even further. When the city annexed out there, there are already homes built, so phase one is built on the backside of an old county road, okay? So, actually, phase one would be the second grouping of homes along the road, and then phase two would be the final and third grouping along the road, just for clarification purposes, because there have been homes out there long before it was ever in the city. And phase one began once it was in the city, Dr. Eves started this, and when it was, you know, when this road was in Alderman Perkins Ward last term, it was incumbent upon the board to go out there and, and pave this street and take in the private drive. And y'all can read the minutes, the last part was left out of that motion at that time. There weren't homes out there. Now, there's homes out there, and those people want to follow the same procedure that's laid out in point number five, under order eight, in those minutes.
But are they asking us to bring the street up to city spec?
They're asking to follow, they're, all they're asking for is to follow out what we did on the, on the previous portion last term, the same exact thing, same quality, just, you know, that road's never going to meet city specifications because it came in as a county road, and that's why you have finding of fact in number two, or where is it? Number three, excuse me, Board of Alderman finds this fact, the road construction specifications found in city ordinance relating to the construction of new roads are not applicable to said road part, which was constructed prior to being annexed by the city. And this is an extension of that said road part constructed prior to annexation of the city.
But just to be clear, so what, what they're requesting that we spend city money to bring this road up to standards that Mr. Webb is estimating to be $31,500 for clearing, base work, three inches of asphalt and culverts?
What they're asking for is the same thing that the city did last board term on the previous portion of this exact same road.
Maybe someone can give you an answer.
That's what that is.
So, they're asking us to spend $31,500 to bring this road up to specification, and it doesn't meet specs and we don't own it today.
The phase that you're talking about, we do not own.
But remember, the homeowners didn't construct the road.
Who does own the road?
The homeowners own it.
Homeowners own it.
Well, now, what's any different from that, Mr. Perkins, in which we had people on Rock Hill that we, we wouldn't do anything of their roads up there until we got ownership?
Okay, is Mr. Webb saying, this what has to happen? The way this is written on the agenda is incorrect. Mr. Webb is correct. The way it has to happen is this way. If the road is to come into the city and to do like in the past, the board does not authorize the legal work. The, the property owners hired their own attorney at their own expense. Now, they have to come with a legal description to be approved by our city engineer. It has to be, it's the Webb's approval and get his blessings. They have to get their own attorney and have a title search done of their property and has to specify that to, to the deed. And then if the city decides to accept that, then the city can do so. But we only do so after receiving a warranted deed, giving us clear titles. So, that's a decision up to the board, but we cannot authorize our city attorney to do any legal work.
That's great. And what you said is that was the same instructions that we gave the people on our road. The problem there is there were so many of them, and it was such a kind of conglomity existing, where they couldn't come up with the deeds and the descriptions or the part yet.
Just like, and, and, Mr. Webb, and also to, and just to further confirm our point, you know, we did the same thing I just explained on Gichi Road, you know, those homeowners got their own lawyer, they got their legal description, they brought it to you, you blessed it, they paid the own lawyer for a title search, title pin got recorded, then we accepted it, then we paved the road. But we don't authorize no city attorney, and the same go out with Treasury and Hendricks, you know?
Mr. Perkins, if I may interrupt you just a second, all I'm asking for is for this board to comply with the order spread upon the minutes, which we speak through. And I'm not, I'm not saying Rodney needs to go do title work for anybody. Says, "The section of said road lying within part two of said subdivision and designated by the developer as a private road shall remain such until such time as the city and the developer or the homeowners living on said road parts shall agree upon the requirements necessary for developer and/or the homeowners to meet to improve said road part and convey said road part to the city." That's all I'm asking for, is that Rodney be allowed to go talk with them and address these exact concerns that you're talking about with them. I'm just asking for authorization for him to do that, Mr. Perkins.
And, but, this is where I'm, this is where I'm confused, and again, I wasn't around in 2002 when this was agreed to, but when we accept other streets, like we just did the research park, like we just did out at North Point, we require them to have this, the roads up to city specs, to add that second layer of asphalt, and that's why I'm confused why we would give something to these guys that we require every other people in the city to, to do it differently. And that's the only reason why I'm confused, and if you told me, hey, they're going to, if they're going to present, they're going to expend their money, present the street in this way, even if it's, then I, I would agree to accept it. I, I'm just confused why we would do something different for them that we're not doing for others.
And it goes back, it goes back to my issue of not having private drives and developments, and, and I'm glad Mr. Parsons is here, so I get to say this again to him, but that's neither here nor there. I mean, it goes back to my point, these roads get built, they're not up to city specs, and then it comes back upon this board to accept them not up to city specs.
Right.
Which is the situation we're in right now?
And they have to, what the city can do, and we circle it all around here, the exact same things in the exact same order that was specified here that were done with part And that includes the property owners deeding to the city the right of way to do this, but it includes the city taking the road as it was constructed, with that same exception, just like it was done with part one. Not up to city spec.
And the money will come out of the gentleman's share of $200,000?
I, I, Bill, do I already have that budget?
Yes, sir.
I guess it's be the same as y'all's speed tables, so I guess y'all going to split them?
Here we go.
So, the question is, is there anything improper, Rodney, with us authorizing an expenditure, accepting these roads that we don't do for, you know, like, research park, we require them to come up to city specs. Every other development that I've been aware of since we came on this board, we require them to be up to city specs. I just, I worry that a taxpayer is going to say, why am I having to pay for doing something, accepting something that's not up to city specs that everywhere else in the, in the city does?
Alderman Cox, I, I'm going to have to look into, I mean, I'm not prepared to give you, I haven't researched the history of these roads, what was done. I mean, I was, you know, I saw this the other day for the first time. I, I know what we've done. We're still in the process, and Alderman Perkins Ward, of trying to get that road done, but we're running into roadblocks, they hired their own attorney. I, I really need to look more into this before I can give you a solid answer on your question. I, I really didn't look at it from that standpoint, you know, to be honest with you.
I just think we got to be fair, but fair to phase one, which is what Sumner's point is, and then fair to everybody else, and there may be some way to do that.
Well, number one, the research park came to us saying, would you accept the things out there? We didn't require them to do anything. If we are willing to spend $200,000 at it and bring it up, we said yes. Now, we, we didn't pursue them to accept it, they came to us. They came to us with the improvements there. You are looking strictly for a fact finding here. This doesn't say that we're going to pay you for that. We're going to get all the legal information here together to pursue, and they're going supposedly deed their properties with their own expense. Am I not right about that?
What happened at the Rock Hill, and what's the same thing, is basically they, we told Mr. Webb, went out there and told them, this is where the easement has to come through. You need to get surveys of each of your properties. And they hired a lawyer, and I explained it to their lawyer. You have to get easements of all your properties. You have to get surveys done. You have to, so that we can prepare the proper easements and the deeds on the particular properties. We ran into roadblocks because money's expended and not wanting to be expended, and also because there was deeds of trust on those properties that had to get released from the mortgage yours on those deeds of trust. So it's an extensive process that takes place. But in regards to what Alderman Cox asked, I'm not prepared to answer that a general question based on this specific, because it looks like this specific issue was dealt with separate and distinct from the way we normally deal with issues. And that's why I'm not prepared at this time to give us a general answer to a specific issue.
And all I'm saying.
Go ahead, P. S.
I was going to offer a motion.
Okay, go ahead, P. S. Go ahead, P. S.
All right, I would move as follows. Number one, the Board of Alderman finds this fact that the section of road lying within Part Two of Cedar Creek subdivision meets sufficient requirements to be considered a public road, period. Number two, said public road part designation will occur only after presentation to the city of right-of-way deeds to said road part. Said right-of-way deeds conveying to the city a road width to be determined by the city engineer and formal acceptance by the city of said rights of way. Three, the Board of Alderman finds this fact that the road construction specifications found in the city's ordinance relating to the construction of new roads are not applicable to said road part, this is Part Two of Cedar Creek subdivision, which was constructed prior to being annexed by the city. No, it was not, to said road part, period. Number four, the Board of Alderman authorizes improvements to the surface of said road part and the drainage on and along said road part. The nature of said improvements to be determined by the city engineer, said improvements being designated to, designed to provide, in the city's judgment, an all-weather traveling surface. Period.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Yeah, I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
A lot of legalese in there, but basically what you're saying, Mac, is that the city's going to take it over and pay for it to be improved.
Just like was done with Part One of Cedar Creek, and we will be through with Cedar Creek.
So you have a precedence in which you're following here for this particular section of it. Is that correct?
That is correct.
It is a precedent, doesn't mean it's a correct one.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please show by raising your hand. All those opposed? Four to two. This brings us down to the consideration of a resolution naming a paying agent for the general obligation public improvement note series 2007 of the city of Starkville, Mississippi. I think it's on the, that's right, it's right here. P. S., make that motion.
Oh, Mr. Mayor and Board, I would offer the adoption of the following resolution, a resolution naming a paying agent for the general obligation public improvement note series 2007 of the city of Starkville, Mississippi. That paying agent is Trustmark National Bank of Jackson, Mississippi, the institution that bought the notes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion say aye. All those opposed, nay. We have one item. Another item is Item L, and that's the appointment of a committee, and I think this is for the study of the bike path of the bids.
Mr. Mayor and Board, I would move that the proposals for engineering services for the bike path and related structures be referred to the infrastructure committee for a recommendation to the board on selection of the engineer.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye. All those opposed, nay. Ben, you ready? Ben's got about three or four more items on his.
Mr. Mayor and Board, the first item before you this evening is a final subdivision plat approval for Greenbrier Phase 11A, which is a continuation of the existing Greenbrier subdivision. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously and with a change in the condition, Number Two, allowing the applicant to enter into a contract for the city to install the final layer of asphalt paving, which is subject to approval by the city attorney and city engineer prior to recording at the clerk's office. And there was, I don't believe there was any public comment on that at the P&amp;Z meeting. It was unanimous recommendation for approval.
Can we talk a little bit about that, Ben, about, we, I'm not aware that we've ever approved a final, approved a final plat without a bond. And in fact, when we didn't have a bond in the last term, something was approved, we went around and around and had to go to, basically go to legal action to get somebody to compel action. I got no problem with setting a new policy in this subdivision in particular, but I'm concerned about what precedent we're setting, what rules we're following, and how we'll approve it in the future.
Yes, sir. Well, actually, the code allows certain, it calls for a couple of different things, or it allows a couple of different things. One of them, which is more commonly used as a bond or other type of financial assurance, which can be in the form of a CD, it could be in the form of a check that is held. The code does allow a contract to be executed upon approval of the attorney and the engineer's approval. It's in the code. My understanding is it's not been utilized. The more common is a bond or some other financial assurance that's, you know, just more commonly used. And a lot of that is, you know, for that assurance that the job is completed.
How will we make that determination? How do we make it in this case, and how will we make it in the future so that we're fair to everyone? Because we need to have clear rules that, all right, we've approved it for this reason, we've denied it for this reason on a contract basis versus, you know, requiring someone to do a bond. And, you know, if we need to approve this tonight, I'm certainly comfortable doing that, but we need to come in very short order back with a process in place that allows for this change in precedent, is what you were saying.
Right, well, again...
What is the reason for doing it on this subdivision?
One is the dollar amount. It's a fairly substantial dollar amount. And two, it's, you know, the execution...
Couldn't be more than other subdivisions that are built in the city.
I'm sorry?
Couldn't be much more than other subdivisions that have been built in the city.
Well, and it depends on the size of the subdivision, and this is a fairly large one. And as far as enforcement, it's, you know, there will be an executed contract and...
Which then you'd have to sue to get enforcement if it were.
If that was the case. One of the considerations in the code is considering the financial, you know, the financial security of the members, of the applicants, I shouldn't say applicants, of the executors of the contract as well. So those are one of the considerations.
You're right, that'd be some clarity.
So you made the decision, you and Bill, to...
Who made the decision to do a contract instead of a bond?
Well, the applicant requested that because it's allowed under the code in the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I understand. Who made the decision to bring that forward?
The applicant did at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
So is Planning and Zoning...
Because if you look on the report, the staff recommendation was for final assurance, you know, financial assurance, which is what has commonly been done. And at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the applicant brought forward that in lieu of that, could a contract be executed, which is allowed under the subdivision ordinance? You know, it's allowed by code, it just hadn't been done. It goes back to one of the, well, we've always done it that way as far as for a bond or what have you.
Thank you for pointing that out. I had missed that, that it was staff recommendation for the bond.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And so is it Planning and Zoning who... Rodney, do you understand what I'm saying? How are we going to have a process for this recommendation to go, or worse? If we're just going to say anybody who comes up, they can either do a contract or a bond, hey, that's great. But if we're going to deny people one or the other option, then we need to have some pretty clear idea of why we're going to do it.
Or reasons.
I understand what you're saying. The process of what happened is Ben said was that it's always, since I've been here, it's been two years, we've dealt with this problem because of what I inherited, a particular subdivision. And it was brought forward, the applicant itself pointed out, we'd like to proceed under this. And so it was just presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, this is what they would like to go forward with, it's up to you. And they basically said, we'll approve it if the Board of Alderman approves it. The Board of Alderman says that you can do, you know...
Was there any discussion before the Planning and Zoning Commission of the history of what the city has normally done? Did they really grasp what usual practice was versus what is occurring here?
I think that there wasn't much discussion, if any, that I, the only thing was, is I basically said, you know, you were well aware, or you were aware that in the past we've required a bond to be posted. I said, but it's been pointed out that the code allows this contract as requested by the applicant, and it hasn't been requested in the, you know, the last couple of years. And so it's up to y'all as to how you want to proceed on it. They said, well, they approved it, subject to that. And I said, well, they'll send it up and let the Board of Alderman decide whether they, you know, want to let it go forward by contract or not, because you make the final decision on that. That's a policy decision that you have to make. They don't, they just looked at the plan and said, oh, man, specifications, basically. Is that right, Ben?
Pretty much.
Alderman Cox is saying, if we're starting to change the thing, there better be criteria or reasons to determine one versus another.
And I understand exactly what he's saying, and there was no criteria put forth. There was no discussion about why this applicant or why this particular plat, or why this should be approved. There was no discussion whatsoever that. The code only requires that there be sufficient financial resources, satisfactory financial resources from the applicant to satisfy the, you know, to satisfy whatever it would cost to take care of this if it's not done.
Now, am I not correct that is, this is the code?
Yes, sir.
Allowed under the code?
Yes, sir, it is.
I see. So it seems to me that the problem is that we're looking at, we don't like the way the code reads. Is that basically what the question is coming up?
It could be, yes, sir.
And so if it's allowed, I don't understand the issue.
Wait a second.
Listen to that. Good gracious, Ben, come on.
It's in the code.
That's what he's allowing and what you guys are saying, you don't agree with the law.
The traditional city process been to require a bond.
Well, you're going all what has been done, but if it's been in the code all along, I don't see how you sit here and deny something that has been in the code. That doesn't make any sense.
It's an E to R in the code.
Well, it doesn't make it illegal.
The Board of Alderman decides. Didn't say it was illegal, as Matt Cox is saying, and I agree that there need to...
I was at the same age as Rodney, Ben, where I was planning and zoning. The way I understood it, Rodney, was that you were comfortable with it, and Bill Webb was comfortable with it, and you drew it up, and everybody was...
If the board decided to do that, I don't make the decision, the Board of Ald, and they said, they said, well, you'll draw it up. And I said, I will draw it up if that's what the Board ultimately decides to do. I don't make that decision. The board makes the decision.
But everybody was comfortable with it, and that made it...
I'm comfortable that I can draft a binding contract on that applicant that it will hold up and forth. I'm certainly confident with that. But whether we have to, whether that applicant follows through on what they say, and whether the board has to end up taking, the city has to take action to enforce it, I'm not speaking that I'm confident.
Was it one of the actions in the contract?
That is, that is correct.
Okay. And if you can get a binding contract...
Ben, do you have any recommendations for a process for the future? How will you make these decisions in the future?
Well, I...
How will you make your recommendations?
I can tell you, as far as our subdivision ordinances go, plating subdivision of land is one of the first steps in development and redevelopment of property. And among the many things that need to be addressed, I've talked with Mr. Webb, and we're probably going to start looking at revising our subdivision ordinances as they are. And part of that will include some criteria and some step-by-step process for things, just so that if we're going to allow options of this type, we need to have a step-by-step process for that. Even with the, you know, that's even come up with the financial assurances, is how we handle those and how we follow through with those. It's, again, it's one of the things, you know, we've always done it that way, and no one's really questioned it. It's just this particular time it came up.
Mr. Griffin, just, let me just kind of wait a little bit, and I'm not as knowledgeable in this matter as my colleagues from WARS III and V, but let me just ask you a little light question here. Under your staff recommendations, Number Two, it says, per appendix, go through all that, and it say, "A contract between the subdivide and the city to install the final layer of asphalt paving shall be approved by the city attorney and city engineer prior to recording of the final plat at the Oklahoma County Sheriff's Office." But let me just say this, and I'm not very knowledgeable on this whole matter, but let me just ask this question. Am I missing something? We want to have a contract approved by this, this city attorney and city engineer should come to the board. I'm just asking, I mean, excuse me, I'd like more information on this. With the contract, you know, it say, "The contract shall be approved by the city attorney and city engineer prior to recording, should not be approved by the board, who has, who's the founding body, governing authority." And I'm just asking only for informational purposes.
My understanding interpretation of this is that the board is authorizing that a contract be executed, or a contract be executed that's approved by the city engineer and city attorney. And Mr. Faber can probably expand on that, but that's my understanding, is the board would authorize approval of a contract, and that contract doesn't come to the board, but it's approved by the, y'all are authorizing the engineer and attorney to approve the contract.
He would do it, and we wouldn't say it again. No, if we authorize it, then the city attorney and the city engineer would draft it and it's all done.
That's my understanding interpretation of how that reads, yes, sir. In a similar aspect, when a financial assurance is made, whether it's a bond, or a check, or a certificate of deposit, I haven't seen that the board, the Board of Alderman, requires a certain type or has any follow-up on that. So, I mean, this is kind of a similar manner of how the actual, the actual process is carried out. I don't think any of y'all have seen, when a plat's come forward, that someone, if they submitted a CD, or a bond, or what have you. It's as long as that financial assurance has been provided, and there's options for that. That's why we say financial assurance. And again, most of the time, it is in the form of a bond, although there's other options for that, and that's not been spelled out. So there's a little bit of leeway... So there's a little bit of leeway in there, and it's not specific in the ordinances how it's done. So I think in this case, it's been left up to the experts, which is Mr. Favor and Mr. Webb, is how that's carried out, so that the end result is that the final paving be done.
Are there any conditions that you see that a contract would not be acceptable?
I do not, but I'd certainly defer that to the attorney when it comes to contracts and contract writing and-
No, contract as one of, you said there's a bond, a check, CD, or a contract. And right now, we have no process in place for accepting a contract or denying a contract. Do you see any conditions, and this would make this very easy if you don't, any conditions that you might say in the future that, no, we are not comfortable with doing a contract with this developer, we're going to require a CD, or a check, or a bond?
And that would be some of the criteria that we would need to address in the future for this. And if you look at it now, we don't have step-by-step process and procedure for financial assurance. I mean, nowhere do we have it. Again, this goes back to one of those, we've always done it that way, and we've accepted a bond or a check, and we've, you know, deposited that, or sometimes it's a letter of credit that we hold. You know, there's options that are out there, and we don't have a step-by-step process. Our code doesn't address it, and we've addressed it as best we can, and to make sure that the end result is the same.
Any more discussion from the other end of the table?
Oh, they're whispering.
Yeah, we're going to have breakfast served.
Yeah. That wasn't in the-
Would you like to make another motion?
Yeah. I'd rather make one that's get out of here.
Well, we got a few things left on.
We can't make a decision on nothing.
Oh, we can make-
We literally cannot make a decision on anything.
You made a decision on everything so far.
Would you like to make a motion on this particular issue here, Jim?
No.
You go.
I know people involved in it without me getting in it.
Move approval of Greenbrier Phase 11A located at the easternmost edge of Greenbrier subdivision with the finding of fact that the final plat meets the minimum standards of the state of Mississippi as required by Chapter 13 and Title 73, Section 17, Mississippi Code 72. And number two, that per Annex B, Article 3, Section 5, Subsection 6, Section B of the city's Code of Ordinances, the contract between the subdivision and the city to install the final layer of asphalt paving shall be approved by the city attorney and city engineer prior to recording the final plat at Doc Tibah County Chancery Clerk's Office.
Do we have a second?
Second to motion.
Excellent. I don't think there's any reason for further discussion. All those in favor, please raise your hand of the motion. All those opposed, it passes.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I'd like to propose the motion that we direct Mr. Griffiths and Mr. Favor to develop a process over the next two weeks so that we can nail down these issues and not have to go through the conversation that we had and present such proposal at the next board meeting.
Say amen. We have a motion with a second. I think that it all of you here at that end of the table, what the motion was. All those in favor of that motion, raise your hand, please. Six oh. Ben brings us down to item three on your list.
Item three is a zoning change request by Mr. Shelton Jones of 1.26 acres of land that's located west, or excuse me, east of the Federal Land Bank off Mississippi Highway 12 bypass. Mr. Jones is asking to rezone the property from R1, single family, to C2, general business, and the purpose of his request is to aggregate the properties for a proposed development that is, that will be forthcoming. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously, and there was no public comment received regarding this item at the public hearing.
Move approval of the request by Mr. Shelton Jones for a zoning change from R1 to C2 for the property located at southwest of the intersection of Mississippi Highway 12 bypass and Pat Station Road, based on the findings that there has been a change of conditions in the area.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Next item, please.
The next item is a zoning request from C2 to a planned unit development for Central Station Phase 2, which is located south of the former Borden Dairy Plant. The applicant's requesting to rezone approximately 1.23 acres of property from general business for 11 single-family residential lots. This is a continuation of Phase 1, which was located along Hogan and Worley Street, of eight lots is the continuation of that. The pud includes a private road and also amenities, including a swimming pool and a community room. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval. There was a preliminary plat that came forward as well on the agenda and was tabled, but the P&amp;Z had a special meeting yesterday, and I'll get to that on the next item. So just wanted to call that out to your attention. There's an accompanying plat. P&amp;Z recommended unanimous approval.
Based on the change of conditions in the area?
Yes, sir.
Remove approval of Mr. Johnny Arnold for a zoning change from C2 to pud for Central Station Phase 2, based on the finding of fact that there's been a change of condition in the area.
Second.
Do we have a motion with seconds? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay.
Okay, the third item is the preliminary plat for Central Station Phase 2 at the Borden Dairy Plant. The item was tabled because restrictive covenants were not provided with preliminary plat as required by the pud zoning. The applicant provided restrictive covenants, which Ms. Tindall handed out prior to the meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission had a special call meeting yesterday afternoon. Six of the members attended, and again, it was unanimous approval of the plat based on the covenants and as presented to the board.
Am I looking at the right one? There's a note here that said Commissioner Beck cast a dissenting vote. Is that a different one than what I'm looking at? Or is that on?
I'm sorry, Mr. Beck did cast a dissenting vote, the pud was unanimously approved, and then when it was removed from the table at special meeting last night, it was passed unanimously last night by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Beck, I believe, felt like that it should have been, it should have been voted on because of the fact that it was a continuation of an existing subdivision that's under development, and that there were similar circumstances, conditions, et cetera. But the technicality of the restrictive covenants are a requirement with, for pud properties. So that's been brought forward.
So as part of this approval, we need to include the five staff recommendations or not, on the last page?
Well, yes, sir, and I've added the third one about the restrictive covenants being provided. They were not provided at the previous, at the regularly scheduled P&amp;Z meeting. They were provided for the special call meeting, and they've been provided in your packets as well, or in your, at your seats this evening.
So it'd be appropriate, when we approve the preliminary plat, to include those five conditions?
Yes, sir, and the third one was added.
Okay.
Because the covenants weren't provided at the regular meeting.
I remove approval of the preliminary plat for Central Station Phase 2, located south of the former Borden Dairy Plant between Worley and South Montgomery Street, including the five conditions that the Planning and Zoning Commission included in their recommendation for approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, sir.
Officer City Clerk, approval of the claims docket.
Good evening. City Clerk's office has before you a claims docket as of May 10, 2007, requesting your approval.
Move approval of the claim socket through May 10, 2007?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay.
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 Thank you. This brings us down to personnel. This is kind of an interesting request. I believe that number one item was left off the seat. Is that not correct, back there?
This is a matter of rescension of a previous board order. It was based on conflicting pieces of information. I merely, as it stands right now, will have to say that I just put it on the agenda incorrectly, and it was not caught by the people that was affected, that were affected by it. So I've come back to, Mr. Young recommended that we come back with just a request authorization to rescind the previous board order and to reflect the correct one, which was an authorization to temporarily promote Marvin Young from sanitation laborer to driver. It would be effective as of the date it should have occurred, had it come on the agenda accurately. Did that make sense?
Sort of.
Sort of, good. Well, sort of will do for right now.
So he'd been promoted from laborer to driver, and we're saying that the correct thing should have been-
Temporarily.
Temporarily.
Right.
Promote. Are the temporarily being determined by what? When does temporary end, or what happens?
I'll ask Ms. Boyd about that, because that was her, that was her request for the temporary promotion.
Then Mr. Young will no longer be driver, is that correct?
Exactly. He'll go back to work.
At a return to the pay level that he presently exists. And the sole thing is temporary versus the permanent implication, is that correct? Mr. Mayor and Boyd, I would move that the board rescind the order at the recess meeting of March 22, 2007, promoting Marvin Young from sanitation department laborer to sanitation department driver, and correct the intention of the original motion, which was to promote Marvin Young from sanitation laborer to temporary sanitation driver, effective March 22, 2007, with the 10% increase, said increase to return to regular rate of pay upon the return of the, is the other driver sick or leave, what? Return of the, what is his name? What is his name on leave?
Willie Turner.
Oh, the return of Mr. Willie Turner, who is on temporary leave. Does that get it, Ms. Boyd?
Is it?
Thank you.
No. Do we have a second to that motion? Do we have a second to that complicated motion?
Ms. Self.
Ms. Self, second to that motion. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, nay.
Thank you.
This brings us down to executive session to discuss going into-
Oh, that's all.
Executive session. Do I hear a motion that we have a closed session to discuss going into executive? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Do we have a motion with a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
All those opposed, nay.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octibah County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.